Jesus, you knew me first in your mind. Oh Lord, how can I thank the me your love? You restored my soul from the deep, my reclaim. Washed all my sins away and put us all on my name.
And when I think of our love and what you've done for me, I can say,
Jesus, you build a home in my heart.
Jesus, the Messiah. You're my Savior and friend. You are mine and I'm yours. You're the Alpha and Omega. Living in my soul. In my soul.
I have been away from you.
I've been away, so far away.
Your unfailing love to hold of me.
Only the love of God didn't let me fall.
I have wondered.
I have thought the world had a place for me. I'm indebted to you, merciful Savior.
I have been redeemed by your blood.
Your precious blood, redeeming love. It has cleansed me from all unrighteousness by your blood. Now I'm whole.
So Jesus, build a home in my heart.
Build a stronghold in my heart.
Build a home in my heart.
With you, my love.
Build a home in my soul.
Cleans me from within my soul.
So Jesus, build a home in my heart.
Raise a desert in my heart.
Build a home in my heart.
Bring life into my heart.
Build a home in my soul.
Build a home, build a home.
Jesus, the Messiah. I love you all, my friends.
Savior and friend.
I believe you are my Savior.
My man and my own.
Oh, you died for me.
You're the Alpha and Omega.
The beginning and the end.
Jesus, the Messiah.
I believe you are my friend.
Savior and friend.
I believe you are my Savior.
My man and my own.
You're the Alpha.
You're the Alpha.
The beginning and the end.
In my soul.
Purify me, sanctify me, and be in my soul. Lave me in my soul. I need you in my soul. Just build your home.
Like a body goes up, I'm coming back to you. Coming back from down. I love sweet and sweet, sweet and sweet.
I'm testing out.
All my soul. You're sanctifying, making me whole. You make my broken hearts to stand. Down. Everything beats your day, Lord.
Le fa, o li di bi, o ta na se. Le fa, o li di bi, o ta na se. Le tati chelente, la hoo cho pa. Mm, ulu ki waruna, humke no. O li di le taya, pitaha nele mo cho pe. Preyeh haay.
Pa, bi wa ya ba tu eswa, ho taya ho di ra ma. Simo ya ra ra ili, ti ne ho ro biwa. Ma simo, amasle, pa ro bi bo ta na, a u ta tamaya.
Fa u bi riwa, ka li na, jesso, ah, ho la le ta. Awe na u ta tamaya. Fa u bi riwa, ka li na, jesso, ah, ho la le ta. Awe na u ta tamaya. U ta tamaya. U yesi, u ta tamaya. U ta tamaya. U yesi, u ta tamaya. U tsue le pili, u sinna po ifa fa, jesso, ah, visa. U ta tamaya. Fa ki fi riwa, ka li na, jesso, ah, ta le ta le ta na, ki ta tamaya. Fa ki fi riwa, ka li na, jesso, ah, ta le ta le ta na, ki ta tamaya. Ki ta tamaya. Ki yesi, ki ta tamaya. Ki ta tamaya. Ki yesi, ki ta tamaya. Ki tsue le pili, ki sinna po ifa fa, jesso, ah, ho fa. Ki ta tamaya. Ki tsue le pili.
Tsue.
Ki tsue le pili.
Tsue.
Ki tsue le pili, ki sinna po ifa fa, jesso, ah, ho fa. Ki ta tamaya. Ki ta tamaya. Ki yesi, ki ta tamaya.
Ki ta tamaya.
Ki ta tamaya.
Ki ta tamaya.
Ki yesi, ki ta tamaya.
Ki ta tamaya.
Ki tsue le pili.
Tsue.
Ki sinna po ifa fa, jesso, ah, ho fa. Ki ta tamaya. Ki tsue le pili. Ki sinna po ifa fa, jesso, ah, ho fa. Ki ta tamaya. Ta ya. Ta ya, omu lu ki. Ta ya. Ta ya. Ta ya, omu lu ki. Ta ya. Ta ya. Ta ya, omu lu ki. Ta ya. Ta ya. Ta ya, omu lu ki. Jesu swe te na le we na, momo ho ro.
Re ta na le ene ho di mo.
Re ho di mo. Ta ya, omu lu ki. Jesu swe te na le we na, momo ho ro.
Re ta na le ene ho di mo.
Re ho di mo. Ta ya, omu lu ki. Ta ya. Ta ya. Ta ya. Ta ya. Ta ya, omu lu ki. Ta ya.
God has seen your tears. God has heard your cries. God has seen you're all alone. He cannot stand your pain. He wants you to come back. Come back into his fold.
Ta ya.
God has seen your tears. God has heard your cries. God has seen you're all alone. He cannot stand your pain. He wants you to come back. Come back into his fold. Ta ya.
Ta ya, omu lu ki. Ta ya, omu lu ki. Ta ya. Omu lu ki. Omu lu ki. Le cha e che ho, sem peto ho. Setla be le bu futana. E ke le cha e jamase ho. Ke man yo, sa le raté. Ke man yo, sa le raté. Le cha e che ho, sem peto ho. Setla be le bu futana. E ke le cha e jamase ho. Ke man yo, sa le raté. Ke man yo, sa le raté. Le ta, le ta, mi o singo re re. Le ta, le ta, o singo re re. Le ta, le ta, mi o singo re re. Le ta, le ta, o singo re re. Jesu re te bi si te. Oe ta, oe ta, oe ta e. Re le mo ki mo, ka le le le. Le la, le sa, o singo re re. Uri ti si ta, uro ta wo, oe ta ya, re wa la e. Ka le 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 ta, la le le ta, o sa no no. Singo re re.
One, two. Good morning, everyone. I would like to start our song service at this time. Please let's all take part in this song service. Let's start off with number, um, Maranamomo So. Morena momo so, ke tla wa, utka len tswe yame. Ho we na, ke tali bi sa, mira. Za ti re lon, di tokha mi si we. Batu ba ho ra ta, ba ta, bo na tu fe tom. O di momo, pa ta yo ke, o ka ba fe me la. May Charichae, please come and pray for us as we do the last stanza one more time. May Charichae, please come forward to come pray for us. Batu ba ho ra ta, ba ta, bo na tu fe tom. O di momo, pa ta yo ke, o ka ba fe me la.
Good morning. Let's close our eyes as we pray. Heavenly Father, good morning this morning. We thank you that you have given us this opportunity to come and worship you in this manner. How I pray, dear Lord, that your presence be with us. Like Moses of the old, we can not go into this session without your presence. May the merits of the blood of Jesus Christ be upon us so that we may not sin against thee as we try to do thy work. Glory, honor, and praise be unto you. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
One, welcome upon our MC to come and start off our program.
Um, I'd like to greet you this morning in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Relidumé di sakalina le loholo lamaranajoso.
Thank you, May Charachay, for, um, the prayer.
Ra le pahamé Charachay ka tapelo ye.
There's nothing that we can do outside God.
Hakanasepeto kasidira inkontlen hamodimu.
Um, my name is Onalenna Lemo.
Ke me Onalenna Lemo.
Um, I'll be the MC for the day. For MC with the pastor, Pemero Seboka.
Katabo kelimata ma isati rohonti enu ke dira le moruti Seboka.
So for us to start, uh, I'll just lay out the program. Like, on your, page five.
Ya kusimala katabo kibalola thulachanyo eka intse mo, uh, dibukane ntsalo na, more page five.
Book, uh, there's a program, general program. But however, the time allotment is not specified. This is why I'm up here now.
Ya nokonale thulachanyo, uh, mo dibukane ntsalo na. Yel onkochaya kwa ladina ko. Kamu kichoné kilinghanu kota ho badilo mo, modinaku.
So we are going to, um, uh, continue with our song service up until eight fifteen. So we have five minutes to continue with our song service.
Ritilokotza la kamopelo koyako nakonya. Uh, bohera bobedi rituleke metsozeli le sumele kothla.
And from eight fifteen to eight thirty, we are going to have prayer by the prayer warriors. I hope they are, they know that and they are on standby and being prepared to come and give us a prayer.
Morao chamoritlabo tsa namotulachanyo, monakonya tapelo kidumela kore bara pediba tenba itulachanze.
Then at eight thirty to eight forty-five, it will be a devotion by Pastor Ben Strike, the president of Botswana Union Conference.
Ni kothabi kholatela, uh, tero kamoruti Ben Strike. Yole mo kamiko Botswana Union.
We will have, um, a prayer by the prayer warriors at eight forty-five to nine.
Morao chamoritlabo kotsa na tapelo ha.
And then at nine to nine fifteen, our president, Dr. Bithiralokabo, president of the South Botswana Conference, will give us a welcome address.
Me morao chamoritlabo re tahu amochela. Ke moruti kabo yole mo kamiwá South Botswana Conference.
Without much ado, let, let, let me just quickly brush over it so that we are all on the same page. So eight to eight fifteen is our song service. Eight fifteen to eight thirty is prayer. And eight thirty to eight forty-five is devotion by the president of the Botswana Union Conference. And eight forty-five to nine will be prayer by the prayer warriors. Nine AM to nine fifteen will be the welcome, um, address by, um, Dr. Bithiralokabo, president of South Botswana Conference. I thank you for your listenership. Thank you, Batile.
Uh, ritlabo tsa number twenty-three. Uh, ya karetabo tsa namonakonya tapelo. Over, over me, Holy Spirit. Tlachonama obitepo. Tla twapi nle ro roma. Kaka hotan. Ni onka te janom. Onka te mi janom. Jeso ka ka te janom. Kaka hotan. Ni onka te janom. Last verse. Katsan komo tam. Uluka o ka te. Ilu yame. Wa komo za wa. Uluka o si onka zam janom. Onka te mi janom. Jeso ka ka te janom. Kaka hotan. Ni onka te janom. Those who are, who will be praying for us, please come forward so that we may get into our time of prayer. It's already, um, past, quarter past eight. All right, um, we will call on Ma Gobagoba to come up front as we, uh, let's do verse three again. Uh, yeah. Um, as she comes forward.
Du alam pitahon. Etara repela rapela aritpehem atwa ro namoho. Jeremiah seventeen, demana ten. Yare, I, the Lord, search the heart and examine the mind to reward each person according to their conduct, according to what their deeds deserve. Ritla rapela. Moso no johofara kuleboha. Re kuleboha, ma utolobutukua akahua shahedua moso le moso. Oro bobo yekuchanela kore, erelhar lebaneyui. Uri kisahano. Ra kolaleta kamoha pechile inkosiya kala lelo. Oja katemanakaho ibua uri zumile hanu relebanaba kahoo. Kwayana wizindi pelo li ditchalo konyo tarona. Me harintse hanu releza kore rota kamaru ahosan aselo kodi mo. Onnel kono kore oka riduela. Kahari diriling, kahakoraten kahakho kateng. Laola ditchalo konyo tarona, dikhopolo tarona, miwaya tarona. Idire kahakoraten kahako. Orokote kahako, ja kareleza kudrela, putakoya Botswana. Kose kahanana opé otlatla elan. Kanta taya ditiro tarona. Re telelepele johofar le hanu. Ore hohe. Ritsepehem atwa ro na le mikhopolo ya ro na. Idi kirozo tarona. Mo kilezo nyahako. Re neela ditchalo konyo tarona, mo se bakense. Mo lezo honila kahoo. Mo diriso nyahako. Kakresi Jeso kia rapela. Amen.
Number twenty-four. Number twenty-four. Wenakia koba tla, I need thee every hour. Wenakia koba tla. Jeso yobo lukam. Len tse ki yaha hom. Jele komo tam. Ewe na kahoba tam. Kadina kototje. Te ho fatam olukin. Keta ho we na. Wenakia koba tam. Nahau filenam. Taylong kadi feyam. Faole kaufi. Ewe na kahoba tam. Kadina kototje. Te ho fatam olukin. Keta ho we na. Wenakia koba tam. Kamon libutru. Ta ja na mi unem. Bo tse lolefe la. Ewe na kahoba tam. Kadina kototje. Te ho fatam olukin. Keta ho we na.
Lander along the way and not mention somebody very important. Um, we are now going to go ahead. We, so that we can make up, use the time available, um, to start our session with the, our theme song. That, uh, is number seventy-nine, which is on page fifteen of your programs. Um, I'll humbly ask you to stand as we sing that song. After the song, may I have the next prayer warrior here to pray before we can usher in, um, the president of Botswana Union Conference for the devotion. Can we stand up and pray and sing? Um, hymn number seventy-nine. Hakala ka ufi masimu.
Together. Hakala ka ufi masimu. Kanale diakom. Opati ma ho daya on. Di taben mabalé. Moré na romela barobi. Re yahora pe la. Baromele ho zadiyak. Baromele kama pa ke. Emo mo tse harim. Pa le tsa tille yapi. Kadiku te kotje. Moré na romela barobi. Re yahora pe la. Baromele ho zadiyak. Wenau roma. Emo re. Tu te diakom. De kodi mo ma ite. Ota itume la. Moré na romela barobi. Re yahora pe la. Baromele ho zadiyak.
Amen. We will remain standing. Um, the next prayer warrior, please come and pray for us. As the prayer warrior is working forward, let me just remind you that we maintain, um, the COVID protocols, the distance in between us. Our masks should be worn over our nose and mouth. You should continue to sanitize as we go in and out of this room. The restrooms are on my right hand. Thank you. Ra ra walohodi mo. Klabo kala koro rihitsona kore ritlahano. Kahoho bamiya namore. Nejaka santeropetsi kore. Masimwa masewu ritoka babata re kohanga. Wonakonya namore. Harana ma tho rihiho. Haritsho tana lohotoa. Kajalo rokopakore, oritselele kothali. Amongole mongoa ro na yohano. Yosina kona lesa ade. Mo kanyo nenamore. Munele kothali. Abonne kodi mo kadi kohotabone. Ya kana koyela hau udira ko moba, moba rita nimba kahoo. Ralopa tsiya moyahako. Ralopa koro rothla, tso moten kadi pelo tarona. Kori dikaka nyata ro na. Lesu rebata inkusi dira. Lesu dira katsiya moyalo kodi. Morana ra ikoko de tapela kahako. Ri zohoro kwanse ha, kahoho tana lamohoro na. Hakanabunse opé roka budira. Nejaka osatehobu ilo lemo kpiné. Rebata kore, kose kahanana opé yola taka, mo lehatila Botswana. Lehatila nohoro, lesu kadi. Lesu kohate, lemo kerekenya sabata. Rokopase, kalinalelo kolo, linalaha, jasakere sete yoro sete momo koro. Apita kore, okonajano. Thank you, we can all sit down. And I would like to invite, uh, Dr. Bithiralokabo to usher in Pastor Ben Strike. Dr. Kabo.
Thank you. Good morning, saints of the living God.
Du alam byitepi ba dimo tsi dilé.
The privilege that we can read God's word together. The privilege that we can read God's word together.
Ke'le'sero, m'kabala le'ohokolamu, dimo, mo'ho.
Because it is what puts us together.
Ka'ho'ne, ke'sone, esesere, k'opanya.
So this morning, I will talk about abiding in Christ.
Momosongono, ke'tla bua, ka'ho'na, mo'ho'kresi, di.
Abiding in Christ.
Na'mo'ho'kresi, di.
The Book of John, chapter fifteen.
Lo'k'alo, Johane, k'aula, le'sumele, wet'hanu.
One of my favorite texts.
Ume'ya, ditte'mana, ze'u, tz'ekidi, rata.
I will read verse seven.
Ta'vala, te'mana, abushu, ba.
The Bible says, "If you abide in me and my words abide in you, you shall ask what ye will, and it shall be done unto you."
Yare, halunna, mo'ho'na, le'mohoku'ama'ana, mo'holu'na. Lot'ala, l'opasin'wi, la'ha'ili, in'yalah, mis'kon'eketla, silu'diret.
If you abide in me,
Halunna, mo'ho'na.
And my words abide in you,
Le'li'ohokolame'ele, na'mo'holu'na.
You shall ask what ye will.
Lot'ala, l'opas, se'lo'sarata.
And it shall be done unto you.
Me'lot'asi'diret.
Beautiful text.
Te'mana, entele'leru.
As men abide in Christ,
Habatu, ba'na'mo'ho'kresi, di.
Christ dwells in them.
Le'ene, u'a, ha'mo'ho'bo'ne.
And they become partakers of the divine nature.
Me'enna, ba'bedui, ba'popeho, ya'selo'odimo.
As men abide in Christ,
Habatu, ba'na'mo'ho'kresi, di.
Christ dwells in them.
Kresi, di, unna'mo'ho'bo'ne.
And they become partakers of the divine nature.
Me'enna, ba'bedui, ba'popeho, ya'selo'odimo.
I remember Christ Object Lesson, page three, three, three.
Ke'akul'ohaloh, bu'k'ala, lola, Christ Object Lessons, te'be'ke, o'ne'yo.
The very first sentence on the top.
Se'lesan, t'yalagohodimo.
It says, "When the will of man
Yare, ha'tato, yamoto.
Cooperates with the will of God,
Idirisa'ny, le'tato, yamudimo.
It becomes omnipotent.
Inna'ye'ou, yanunuho, esina, inselika.
We are able to be partakers of divine nature.
Re'ho'na'horre, re'ne'ba, ruwa, popeho, ya'selo'odimo.
SDA Bible Commentary, volume five.
Le'k'alo, le'ola, diga'khe'lo, mo'obabili.
Page ten forty-three.
Te'be'ke, o'ne'ya, ten forty-three.
It says, "Their thoughts
Yare, jalohé.
Become so identified with the divine will."
Ka'iwa, u'twana, le'tato, ya'selo'odimo.
That is, if we abide in Christ,
Ki'ore, ha'na'mo'ho'kresi, di.
Our thoughts
Digakanyo, zarun.
Become so identified with the divine will that only such requests are made as are in harmony with that will.
Bi'twana, le't'oleho, ye'ou, le'ke'leto, tato. Idibedi, di'roja, k'ake'ti, ki'horata, ha'mudimo, e.
And 1 John, chapter five, verse fourteen, it meant this.
Johano, wan'takha'ula, o'thanu, te'mana, le'sumele, bone, i, kanela, si.
Let me read it to your hearing.
Te'ki, lu'ibalele.
Bible says,
Ababili'ar.
And this is the confidence that we have in Him.
Eke'one, chlamamiso, ernan, le'ye'ou, le'ye'ou, ne'mo'wen'ne.
That we, that if we ask anything according to His will,
Horre, haril'op, la'ha'ili, in'hu'ya, k'ahato, nyaha.
He hears us.
Wa'ru'wa.
That's why the Bible Commentary says, "Their thoughts become so identified with the divine will that only such requests are made as are in harmony with that will."
Horre, digakanyo, ha'ilo, horre, dilumahanyo, le'selo'odimo, Di'upo, di'di'ro'ha'ela, ho'ya, k'ahato, nyaha.
At that time, when the will of man is cooperating with the will of God and when we are abiding in Christ,
Ha'tato, ya'situi, t'mailana, le'tato, ya'selo'odimo, re'na'mo'ho'kresi, di.
No sin intervenes to present a favorable answer.
Ka'ho'na, si, biseli'ongore. Se'mose'le'ongora, sekatisa, karabo, esamre'le'serhi.
Abiding in Christ,
Unna'mo'ho'kresi, di.
I encourage you.
Ki'alorutwe.
Let us abide in Christ.
Arinne, mo'ho'kresi, di.
So that our will is so close to God.
Horre, tato, yarona, inna'ya'mudimo.
So that we can become partakers of the divine nature.
Re'beren, nabaruwa, e'peho, ya'selo'odimo.
And then the Bible says,
Ababili'be'iri.
And my word
Le'ohokolame.
Abide in you.
Le'ne'mo'holu'na.
God's word.
Le'ohokolamu, dimo.
You remember what Psalm 119, verse eleven says?
Pesale ma'ye'ou, ya'le'holo, le'sumele, bo'herabom, te'mana, le'sumele, moto.
Thy word have I hid in my heart.
Le'ohokolahahu, kilihit, kil'emo'piru nyane.
So that I will not sin against you.
Horre, ke'se'ka, k'ahole'ohé.
Men receive Christ by receiving His word.
Batu, ba'mo'hala, kresi, di, k'ha'mo'hala, le'ohokolahahu.
As they feed upon God's word,
Jaka, ha'ba'ikota, k'ale'ohokolamu, dimo.
It enlightens their mind.
Le'sediha, t'ani'ch'alo, k'onyo, zar'bo'ne.
As we feed upon God's word,
Jaka, harikota, k'ale'ohokolamu, dimo.
God's word enlightens our mind to divine issues.
Le'ohokolamu, dimo, le're'sediha, le'za, dil'ozaselo'odimo.
Our minds will be closer to the will of God as we feed in God's word.
Dig'ch'alo, k'onyo, zar'ona, dig'ata'malana, le'tato, ya'mudimo, harikota, k'ale'ohokolahu.
And our lives are lighted as we feed on God's word.
Me'limatsiluarona, sediha, diwa, harik, jale'ohokolamu, dimo.
You remember Psalm 119, verse one oh five?
Pesale ma'ye'ou, le'holo, le'sumele, bo'herabom, we, te'mana, ya'le'holo, limitwe, methanu.
Thy word is there,
Le'ohokolahahu.
Lamp unto my feet.
Ke'le'sedi, iladi, na'otame.
And a what?
Li.
A light unto my path.
Li, lub'wanne, l'watil'ayame.
As men make an intelligent choice
Habatu, badira, ts'weto, ye'bot'hali.
To follow God's word and obey it.
Osalale'ohokolamu, dimo, le'ohol'ua.
It enables them
La'ba'konza.
And gives them the power of heaven.
Ebe, le'bananu, mo'ya'selo'odimo.
And Christ, the hope of glory, is formed within their life.
Me'kresi, di, t'lo'ha'lo, ya'kalalelo, wa, bupiwa, mo'ho'bo'ne.
Let's read verse seven.
Ha'obalat, te'mana, ya'busu.
The text we've just read.
E, onemolek'alo, le'lebalarismol'ala.
It sort of gives two conditions for answered prayer.
E'na'ya'mabaka, amabe, di'horitita, p'lo'zar, nadiarabi, we.
Abiding me.
Nna'mo'ho'na.
Let my words abide in you.
Al'ohokolame, le'ne'mo'hu'en.
It says, "If that happens,
Arinmo'ha, u'dira.
You shall ask what ye
Le'ta, l'op. La'ha'ili, in'yalaselo'sarata.
And it shall be done unto you."
Me'lot'asi'diret.
Someone said, "An answered prayers
Mungu, urile, itapelo, t'risha'abi'wi.
Are training grounds for unbelief."
Ki, wa'bo'le, mo'le'hi'lo, la, hot'ok'adumel.
But the Bible is giving us a complete light.
Me'ababili'ri, nabutse'lo, k'ale'todo.
That God can answer all our prayers.
Horre, mo'dimo, ok'araba, itapelo, zo, t'zarona.
If we abide in Him and God's word abide in us.
Arinna'mo'ho'en, le'ohokolahahu, ele, na'mo'horu'na.
I'm here to encourage you.
Ki'hano, k'ol'utwe.
As I encourage myself.
Jaka, hale, nak'i, tutwe.
Abide in Christ.
Nna'mo'ho'kresi, di.
When we abide in Christ,
Ha'una'mo'ho'kresi.
You want to do those things that are pleasing to Christ all the time.
Obata'horu, u'diret, se'otse'lo, horre, di, tumerisa, kresi, di, k'ha'le.
When God's word abide, when it God's word.
Ha'ojale, n'sulamu, dimo.
Christ's life is formed within your life.
Botse'lo, bo'ha', kresi, di, bo'ha', b'peha, mo'botse'lo, ny'waha.
May the Lord bless us
Amorana, arisohah.
As we abide in Him.
Jaka, harinna'mo'ho'en.
As God's word abide in us.
Jaka, le'ohokolahu, le'na'mo'horu'na.
So that we can call upon heaven
Horre, retarib, bitele'odimo.
And God will hear.
Me'modimo, ota'ru'wa.
And answer our prayers.
Aba'araba, me'rapeluaru.
Let us pray.
Arabilen.
We thank you, Father, because you are the vine and we are the branches. Help us, Lord, to forever be attached to you as the source of life and the source of light. We thank you for your word, which is a light and a lamp unto our path. We thank you for your word, which when we hide in our hearts, we may not sin against you. And Father, we pray that help us to love being close to you and to love reading your word. Because we will grow each day in Christ and grow towards His majesty. Bless each one of us as we strive to abide in you. God bless you. Amen.
Amen.
I would like to thank the President of the Union for that message and also Brother Thamelang for being here, standing by him to make us understand it in our mother language. With that, we will call upon the prayer warriors so that we can seal this covenant that has been placed to us. So we are going to go into a season of prayer. We will kneel down and ask at least three prayer warriors to pray for us. Amen. Belo. Come over to the podium. Ta'ho. He'la. Ra'rapela. Ra'rona yolo, rato, yo'okole'ohodimo. Le'ohokolahahu. Le'badilu, mo'tezung, yarona. La'tulusitwe. Hotwa'mo, disosin, sediharlo'hanin. Le'thalusitwe. Kabu'thepa. Holomo, ra'holabuhela. Ke'ke'khalimo, le'tutwe'zo, mo'horu'na. Jaka, re'le'ha'ano. Arra. Ma'ra'ho'ha'le, ohokolahahu, le'badilu. Ri'ne'ala, mo'di'atlanzahahu, kabu'yo'the. Ri'thusen, horre, sese'badilu'en. Mosongono. Le'mo'di'nakontzotla, sedihitilin. Resa'akul'ohela. Rese'be'emo'rithalo, k'anyonzarona. S'tla'serrek'ale, mobu'ika, rabialo, ny'wata, z'ilenu, yo'the. Asse'ka, aitetla, leha'ili, hu'ipikela, Ilisidirisu'asayowusula, ah'usanini, jalo. Nebue'mon, ri'thusen, ho'na'mo'hu'en'a. Mis'aretu kupan, lis'arisidira'en. Rese'ne'we, reseseh'ale diwe. Re'le'bo'halahore, ta'lo'ahahu, ke'tzul'ehenzu. T'sul'ehenzu'ahah, e'bo'amaru'ur. Kamabaka, t'alela, uru'ua. Jaka, re'talela, re'ohokopa. Kakreste jesu. Re'le'bo'halakarabat, tapel'ouy. Amen. The next prayer warrior, please. The next prayer warrior. We say three prayer warriors. Next prayer warrior.
I'll ask pray. Marana'le, mulukarna, ra'olaboh. Ra'olabohala, m'pawabotselo. Ra'olabohala, horre. U'limodimo, u'limoholu, le'kalo. Re'le'batpor, resabasi'pe, osampoh, re'rezaribu'a. K'ajalorok'nyala, t'lo'la, k'alale'to, kalorat'lo, l'ok'alol, k'atsahwatu, eka. Re'tlahape, la'kahahu, mo'kosese'ba, kamaren. Ri'ikokubetsa, l'opu'itsh'ar'lo, jadi'be'let'sia, mis'ua, ahahu. Harana, bu'k'ni, b'peh, gin'tlahatsa. Asaya'bu'aka, ditil'zarona, horre. E'mo'ma'ite'go'ngarona, ditil'at'rona, o'so, mo'hotwa, nyats'ona, halali, dil'ona, tirima'qapila, tirihatik'ua, ng'adina. K'ajalomarana, ra'ratsahwatu, ahahu, yera'ti'se. Ri'tlakohu'en'a, marana. Horre, rets'ele, mo'hu'en'a, jaka, le'ohok'le, satsahwatu. Ka'hor, k'avena, rekadi'k'ana, tz'otle, k'avena, rebahaisa, le'bone, bahin. Jaka, tiril'otzi, disimol'ula, ya'seshi, ni'marana. Ra'walalitza, horu, o'tle'warreni, mo'hu'yoni. Uye'tele'tili, uye'ho'he, ra'tahahu, dira'kha'le. Ra'rapela, horre, k'ay'ena, marana, i'khalale'te. Bat'obotle, babani, bu'k'olo, j'ahahu. Ayobusu'la, le'ben'k'ala, bak'ahu, bas'abisive. Me'jesu, a'ts'ele, di'uk'ohodimo. U'bu'amol, hukunla, ahahu, marana. Horre, harakots'ele'letza, k'ohodimo, wen'a, k'isi. Wat'la'ale, rebath'ohohu'en'a. Arakots'ele'letza, k'ohodimo, marana, ret'sayla. Bayme, dibadi'puthe'ahu, botle, bava'ham. Le'ba'obotle, b'ak'ale, ben'batzai, dit'swets'omotatz'ila, humpino, kaputhe'ahu, ahahu. Re'bat'sayla, mo'kutin'ya, satlas'ahahu, marana. Horu'ami, me'hopolo, ya'boni, le'ma'ikutu'aboni. Horre, jaka'tle, be'ba'ka, ny'ababu'la. Bat'ibisanama, baka, kab'ahu, k'ijoputhe'ahu, ahahu. E'be'ba'ite'letz'ip'ele, k'ma'ahahu, ubitze'po. Horre, kobukutu'onghas'wets'edu'we, di'wets'om, marana. R'ot'le, rigwe'ero, il'uru'ru, marana, ona'ale, ru'ona. Re't'sayla, bu'k'op'olo, j'yo'tle, mo'kutin'ya, satlas'ahahu. Ele'kamul'uk'yesu, kriste, ki'ara, te'la. Amen.
Father, we continue to humble ourselves before your throne of mercy this morning. And we declare how unworthy we are at times to be dealing with your business. But we thank you for the blood of Jesus that continues to cover our sins, that continues to work in our hearts, that continues to transform. And we thank you for the Holy Spirit that whispers in our ears. We are praying that you give us humble hearts. May we allow ourselves to be used by you. May we allow you to dwell in us and accomplish your will through us. We know this is your work. We have gathered here, Father, to look at how we want the work to go. Father, we do that in partnership with you. And we are praying that may it not be our will, but your will be done. May everything that we may have planned, Heavenly Father, on the side, be confused by the evil one so that it is just your will that supersede everything that will transpire here. Father, we are grateful because you are God. And we know that anything you allow, you allow it to the glory of your name. And Heavenly Father, as we have humbled ourselves here as your servants and as we have called upon you to be present here, we have faith and trust that you will accomplish your will. For we have prayed all this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Before we usher in Dr. Wudirolok Gabo, who is the President of South Arizona Conference, we will hear a special rendition from we will hear a special rendition from Dr. Sikwa Bangato. Your time.
Hello? Okay. Tameelang Tete. Hari tamodi sessioning. Sometimes it's business as usual. And we may forget about the great event that's about to come. Jesus is coming again. And I'm going to be reminding us of that great event that's coming. I dreamed that the great judgment morning had dawned and the trumpet had blown. I dreamed that the nations had gathered to judgment before the white throne. Out of the throne came a bright and shining angel that stood by the land and the sea and with his hand raised up to heaven. Sadtime was no longer to be. Ooh, what a whipping and wailing! As the lost were told of their feet, they cried for the rocks in the mountains. They prayed, but their prayers were too late. They cried for the rocks in the mountains. They prayed, but their prayers were too late. The rich man was there, but his money had melted and vanished away. A paupé stood on the judgment. His debts were too heavy to pay. The great man was there, but his greatness, when death came, was left far behind. The angel that opened the records, not a trace of his greatness was found. Ooh, what a whipping and wailing! As the lost were told of their feet, they cried for the rocks in the mountains. They prayed, but their prayers were too late. They cried for the rocks in the mountains. They prayed, but their prayers were too late.
Maranata? So we continue with our program. I would like to usher in Dr. Butirolo Kabo, the president of the South Botswana Conference.
Kyabidi misa kanya la Jesu Christe. Amen.
I greet you in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. I stand here to welcome you to this important work we have gathered here for today.
Let me first begin by welcoming and appreciating the presence of our leaders from the union. Pastor Ben, the president, who just gave us a reviving message. We also do have the executive secretary of Botswana Union, Dr. Kefah Matetwe. I don't know if you all know him, but he can rise so that you can see him. We are also privileged that we do have the chief financial officer of Botswana Union, Sister Sabonile Mohoja. We will ask her to stand. Thank you very much for your presence. We are also aware that there are some executive committee members who are coming from Botswana Union. We also want to take this time, I will not enumerate you, but wherever you are, executive committee members of the union, please rise as we welcome you to this very important meeting of South Botswana Conference. Okay, I see some of them are standing. All right, you are most welcome. We also want to take this time to welcome all delegates from the churches. I would not want to make you stand, but we recognize that you are here at this session. You are most welcome. We also take this time to welcome all the delegates at large. Those are the workers of South Botswana Conference and institutions of South Botswana Conference. We welcome you and the executive committee members of South Botswana Conference. We welcome you all to this meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we meet in this session to transact the Lord's business under very difficult circumstances that we are going through. We, as we are all aware, we have been attacked by a pandemic that is ravaging the whole world and it has not left us as South Botswana Conference out. We are also affected by this pandemic. We come here with wounded hearts. We have lost our loved ones, our members. We come here with emotions that are all mixed up even as we meet to transact the Lord's business. We are also wounded spiritually. We know that the churches that we represent, perhaps they are not as vibrant as they should be because they've been affected by the impact of COVID-19. And therefore, as we meet in this meeting today, I ask you to take time to reflect upon what has transpired in the past few years or first past few months. And let's use this time to come up with plans and way forward on how the church can continue to live in such situations. This is a time that we, as churches in South Botswana Conference, we need to plan ahead. And make relevant plans that will speak to the current situation and even to the future. How we would, we should, we should minister to ourselves, to the community, and to whosoever in advancing the course of God. We meet here under the theme "Mission Without Limits." I invite you, as we transact in this business, to think beyond any kind of limits in advancing God's kingdom. It is my hope that this meeting, this session, will come up with solid, sound plans of advancing God's course. Finally, we are a spiritual movement. As we meet here, let's take time to pray. It will be pleasing to see groups of people praying together with a heavy heart concerned about how the web of God will go forward, because we realize that the time is at hand. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to South Botswana Conference Special Session. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Ra Rona, Dr. Butirolo Kabo, for that heartfelt welcome. Now we can be at ease, because from here I can see a lot of tension yana. So just tend to the person next to you and nod to show them that they are in the right place. We've been welcomed. So let's ease up. I get a, we've been sent to do a big... Thank you so much, Pastor Kabo. Without much ado, I will call upon my co-platform manager, who is the executive secretary of South Botswana Conference Until Sunset, Pastor Butirolo, sorry, Pastor Kenelose Boka, executive secretary now, until sunset. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Malemo. Let me take this time and greet each of you in the powerful and wonderful name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. You have already been welcomed to this special elective session, which we have long waited for. And we want to thank the Lord that today finally it has come. Can you say a big amen? Because we have been praying that it should take place. We come now to the call to order. It is my happy privilege to tell you that on 12th December 2021, the executive committee of South Botswana Conference of the Seventh Adventist Church in fulfillment of the SBC 2019 Regular Session Action, SBC 1915. One five.
15. 015. You should remember that action. And in harmony with SBC Constitution and Bylaws 2019. Article 2, Section 2, Item 2. Took an action to call the SBC Special Session. To be held on the 31st January 2022. At Grand Palm Hotel, Haburoni. And further, that a letter dated the 14th December 2021 was sent to all SBC churches to choose regular delegates. And further, a letter of invitation was sent to all delegates at large to attend this special session. Mr. Chair. First of this morning, 8:00 AM. Of the 182 delegates eligible to attend this special session. 172 delegates registered. According to SID Working Policy 2019, 20, 28 in 2019. Article 2, Section 5, which is page 213. And/or SBC Constitution and Bylaws 2019, Article 2, Section 2, which is page 9. Article 2, Section 2, Page 9. We constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. Let me also remind the delegates that in the same constitution, the constitution states that once the meeting is declared open, the delegates present shall constitute a quorum. In other words, to be working with 172 to form our quorum. I wish to remind the delegates of the Sunday Monday that is ours as we commence the business of this special session. And allow me just to highlight four things. I'm not going to make a commentary on them. Number one. Delegates to a conference session are not chosen to represent merely the church or conference. They should remember their responsibility for the welfare of the world work of the church. Okay, delegates to a session, they should look at the church in its entirety. Not the church that you are representing, not the conference that you are representing, but the entire Church, Seventh Adventist Church. Number two. It is not permissible for a church or conference delegates to organize or attempt to direct their vote as a unit. Number three. It is not permissible for delegates from a large church or the conference to claim preeminence in directing affairs in a conference session. Number four. Each delegate should be susceptible for the direction of the Holy Spirit and vote according to personal convictions. You will find this in the church manual, page 110. Mr. Chair. We eagerly await you for the proceeding of the SBC 2022 Special Session.
Mr. Secretary, we can continue.
Thank you so much, Pastor Chair. That statement, the president was saying, the meeting is declared open. Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor Chair. We continue with our program and we go to a sitting of the delegates. And this is how we're going to do it so that we can keep time and preserve time. We're not going to be mentioning the names of the delegates, but we're going to group them together. We will start with the delegates from the higher organizations. We start with the SID Ex-Com members. We will humbly request them to stand so that we can sit them accordingly. I'll make, I'll keep on making motions and then at the end we will vote them together. The one that is registered was one? Okay, there he is. I move, Pastor Chair, that we sit the SID Ex-Com member. Accordingly.
It has been moved. Any seconda?
You may be seated. We'll keep on dust. We will make a vote at the end. We go to BUC Ex-Com members. We will also humbly request them to stand. I also move, Pastor Chair.
Pastor Chair has voiced, given voice. It has been moved. Any seconda?
Thank you so much. We go to the SBC Executive Committee members. We will request them to stand. I also move, Pastor Chair.
Seconda?
Thank you so much. We go to SBC Departmental Arrators. And here, we are referring to those who may not be executive committee members. Thank you so much. You may stand.
It has been moved. Any seconda?
We go to the SBC Ministerial Employees. We will request them to stand. Those that are not in the Ex-Com or in other portfolios. I also move, Pastor Chair.
It has been moved. Any seconda?
Thank you so much. We go to Literature Evangelists. We have one, Dino Osimang. I also move, Pastor Chair.
It has been moved. Any seconda?
Thank you so much. All these delegates that I was mentioning, we are sitting them with voice and vote. We go to SBC Coordinators. We will request them to stand and we sit them with voice but no vote. And also on that one, though he's not a SBC Coordinator, but Muhotsi, we want him to also join them there with voice because he's helping us with music and other things but no vote.
It has been moved. Any seconda?
Thank you so much. We go to SBC Office Staff. And I move that we sit them without voice and without vote. We will request them to stand also.
It has been moved. Any seconda?
Thank you so much, Pastor Chair. I move that we accept the delegates at large as presented. Okay, sorry, we forgot someone very important. We have a delegate from, all the way from the General Conference. General Conference Accounting Services, Audit Services, sorry, JICAS. Mrs. Joy Mukotedi. I move, Pastor Chair, that we sit her with voice but no vote.
Did she stand? Oh, she's here. Okay. It has been moved. Any seconda? I see there's somebody at the mic, Pastor Sarole.
Just an observation chair. I didn't hear the school principals being said. Okay, and it appears we are going to the end.
Thank you, Muruti, for that observation. We are sorry we missed them. SBC School Principal. Those that are not in the executive committees of SBC, we request them to stand and I also move, Pastor Chair, accordingly.
It has been moved. Any seconda? Thank you.
I move, Pastor Chair, that we sit the delegates at large as presented.
It has been moved. Any seconda? Seconda? Any observation? I don't see any hand or anybody at the mic.
All in favor, show by lifting up your voting cards.
Thank you very much. Any opposed? Show by the same side.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Muruti. We now go to the regular delegates. The ones from the local churches. We also take them as a block. I move, Pastor Chair, that we accept the delegates, regular delegates as presented, except the following. 53, 71, and 79. 53, 73. 71. So 71 less 79. I also move, Pastor Chair. I request all the delegates that we represent to stand. All delegates, all regular delegates. I also move, Pastor Chair.
It has been moved. Any seconda? Seconda? Any observation? All in favor, show by lifting up your hands. All right, thank you. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor Chair. We go to those churches that we request that, that we should leave them for now. These are, these are delegates from the newly organized churches that were organized after the last session. So we are going to request that you allow us to take them as a block. But if this... So we will, I move, Pastor Chair, that we accept the following churches into the Sisterhood of Churches in South Botswana Conference. Matebeling, Mudipane, Datakani, that were organized October 31st, 2020.
It has been moved. Any seconda? Seconda? Any observation? Right, I see.
Right, I see somebody moving towards the mic.
The comment is that delegate number fifty-three represents Lethua Church and according to the commentators' knowledge, Lethua Church was organized long before the date mentioned.
I believe that Lethua was among those that were accepted or seated when other churches were when other delegates, regular delegates, were being seated. Because it's an old church like you are saying, it has long been organized. So unless if there is something that I don't understand, but according to what I hear is that Lethua is supposed to be among the delegates that were accepted with others. Yeah, he will, he will, if by chance there was a mistake, he will go over the the churches that were supposed to be the representatives for these churches. So he will just go over those ones as a mistake. Just allow him to do that now. We are on page eight of our program. And we have said we should put aside fifty-seven. Which is Lethakani West. Seventy-one, which is Matebeling. And seventy-nine, which is Mudipani. Okay, alright, there was a motion in a second. It's in fifty-seven. Oh, okay, now we have corrected that. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you so much.
It might have been a slip of the tongue to say number fifty-three instead of fifty-seven.
We apologize for that mistake. Yes. All in favor show by lifting up your your cards. Thank you very much. That means those three churches have been accepted into the sisterhood of South Botswana Conference Churches. We are going to request now that we sit the the delegates. And we'll ask the delegate from Lethakani West, that is Mabuan Ifram, to stand. The delegate from Matebeling Malunga Muriyala to stand. And also delegate from Mudipani South Uiding to stand. I move Pastor Chair that we sit them accordingly. It has been moved in a second. Any observation? Yes, I see somebody at the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we need to note the name of Lethakani West is not Lethakani, it's supposed to be Lothakani.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. All in favor show by lifting up your voting cards. Thank you very much. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you so much. Before we go to the mission statement, let me just make a statement regarding the delegates and the replacement error. If you are a delegate at large or you have been sent by the church to come to this session. And for some reason you are not able to attend. Replacement must be done through the same process that elected the the first delegate. In other ways, it should be the business meeting that elects you to come. Unless if the church board was empowered by the business meeting to do that. And the church must communicate that information to the office. And those replacements will be honored, those replacements will be adhered to. And also let me state this, that the delegates that were replaced by the churches with the program was already done. For the purposes of this meeting, we may not necessarily change your name, your name tags and in the program here. Just know that you are called by that person's name for this meeting. And wear that tag, that by that person's name. But our records, because the church would have already communicated to us, will correct our records. I think that is clear as crystal, not clear as mud. Okay, we continue till we go to the mission statement?
Point of order, Chair. There's a point of order. Lethua has not been set. They send apology that we have, but it's not set. May we start it, Chair.
Okay, we are going to request the delegate from Lethua Church, Lethuhi le Muremi, to stand. I move Pastor Chair that we sit him as a regular delegate. It has been moved in a second. Thank you very much. Any comments? All in favor show by lifting up your voting cards. Thank you very much. Thank you for that observation. We appreciate. Thank you so much. We go to the mission statement of the seven Adventists Church. Our mission is to make disciples of Jesus Christ who live as loving and loving witness and proclaim to all people their everlasting gospel of the three angels messages in preparation for his soon return. As referenced in Matthew chapter twenty-eight from verse eighteen to twenty, Acts chapter one, verse eight, Revelation chapter fourteen, verse six to twelve. Our method. Guided by the Bible and the Holy Spirit. Seven Adventists pursue this mission through Christ-like living, communicating, discipling, teaching, healing, and saving. Our vision. In harmony with Bible revelation. Seven Adventists see as the climbers of God plan the restoration of all creation to full harmony with his perfect will and righteousnessness. I move Pastor Chair that we affirm the mission statement of the seven Adventists Church. It has been moved in a second. It has been seconded. Normally, we don't have anything, but in case there may be somebody who wants to say something on the mission statement. All in favor show by lifting up your voting cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you so much Pastor Chair. We continue with our program. We go to protocol or housekeeping rules. All participants at the conference session are requested by the chairperson to adhere to the following protocol. Number one, please let us adhere to COVID nineteen protocol. And also we want to request, dear friends, our special elective session is just for one day. So as we take COVID nineteen breaks, let us make sure that we come one time so that we can continue with the business of the day. Do not carry on conversation during the services. Indicate your desire to speak to any item under discussion by raising up your right hand and wait for the chair to recognize you. Once you have been recognized, please state your name and organization clearly before proceeding. Limit your comments to the point under discussion. And speak to the chair at all times while making your contribution. And dear friends, during discussions, each delegate will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, including interpretation. I believe that they soon will be putting up a timer somewhere so that it can start regulating us. Each delegate is to follow the laid-down rules of order during this business session. Let's acquaint ourselves with this letter book here. And then the other thing, our name tags, especially the linear. They are color-coded. You need to check yours. Green means that we have voice and vote, like mind. And then yellow, I think Bami is wearing it, it means voice but no vote. Red means no voice, no vote. And then the last one. Delegates from SID XCOM, BUC SCOM, SBC XCOM, SBC officers and SBC directors are not eligible to participate in the organizing committee and the nominating committee. Officer, SBC officer. Except the BUC officers. Thank you so much. Okay, we continue with our program. We have a proposal that we want to bring to you here. The proposal is for the new constituency term. Let me clarify this so that when I make a motion, at least you understand what the rationale behind this. All of us will remember that in our last regular session, which was in November twenty nineteen. Okay, there's a reminder here that we skipped the adoption of the agenda of the day. Because now we get to the agenda, we get to the substantive issues that brought us here. So we need to vote them. I believe that all of us, we have received this program. And also, the agenda of this special session was communicated to all the churches. I move, Pastor Chair, that we adopt the daily program as presented in our program here.
It has been moved. Any second there? Any observation on the agenda as presented? I see somebody at the mic, I see.
Mine, mine is a single one. I note in the program that in terms of protocol to COVID, that it's not clear as to when the breaks will be made. Are we going to have breaks every two hours or what? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, that one, I think we will make sure that we adhere to it. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Dr. Vipoladi, yes, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. I was standing far because I could realize that that light was in front of you. A quick one, Chair. Since the last session in twenty nineteen to date, you, as the office, as the South Botswana Conference, have been very busy carrying out the activities of the conference. It's almost three years, basically. Thank you, sir. Okay, I was saying that since the last session of the conference, almost three years ago, the office has been very busy discharging activities of the conference. I don't see in the program here how, where it will be presented to this session, the wonderful works you've done in this past three years. Can you show if it is provided for? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Norman Sabonoch of Botswana Central Church. I make reference to the letter from the conference of twenty-nine November twenty nineteen, which was a letter stating the reason for deferral of the elective part of the regular session. In our program, the expectation is that there will be an update. I'm not sure whether it will be part of the keynote, but I thought I should mention it upfront, that we would request an update with regards to the reasons for the deferral, in the sense that there were, at that point, untenable conditions that existed between the Botswana Union Conference and the South Botswana Conference, and many numerous reasons were stated. And therefore, the expectation is in the program if we could get an update. Thank you.
The date of the letter, once again?
Twenty-ninth November twenty nineteen.
The two speakers, I can confirm that those points that you are raising will be covered by the keynote address. Thank you. All in favor of adopting the program as presented? Okay. Any opposed? Thank you. It carries.
Thank you so much. We are still explaining why we are proposing that we revise the new term of the constituency sessions. And I said that in twenty nineteen November, that was a regular session, do recall. And because of the reasons that were laid out by those that have commented here, the session, some parts of the regular session items were deferred to a special session. And the main item being the election of the executive committee officers and departmental directors. And because of, even the time was specified in that action, when that special session was supposed to be called. And because of COVID-19 and other reasons, the session was not called at that particular time. And the effects of COVID-19 continued until they were lifted in September last year. And when the special session was supposed to be called, or when the special session was called for the thirty-first January twenty twenty-two. We understand fully, Seventh Adventists, that you cannot start the term from a special session. The terms start from the regular session. So if the elective session is called on thirty-first of January twenty-two, it means that the regular session should be called in November twenty-two. And looking at how close the elective session is to the regular session, and also the cost implications of that, we came up with this idea to request that we revise the term for our constituents. So let me make a motion so that when you speak, you speak to the motion. Whereas the SBC's regular constituency term ended on November twenty nineteen. And SBC constituents during that session took an action to extend the sixth term. And further deferred the election to a special session. And whereas when the special session was supposed to be called, COVID-19 restrictions made the calling of the session not practical. And whereas after the restrictions were lifted, the date set for the special session is the thirty-first January twenty-two, which is close to the date for the SBC regular session, which is November twenty-two. Coupled with the cost implications. I move, Pastor Chair, that we adopt the new constituency term for SBC as follows. That the seventh constituency term of SBC to begin on the first of February twenty-two until the thirty-first January twenty-five. I'll move, Pastor Chair. This is a three-year period.
It has been moved. Any second there? Thank you very much. Just in addition to what the executive secretary has said, this is a recommendation that comes to us from the executive committee of South Botswana Conference, and we are also cognizant of the fact that should this cycle not be revised, it would mean that the people that are going to be elected today will only serve how many months? Ten months, and then we will go to a regular session. Okay, any discussion? I see somebody at the mic, Dr. Sikwa. Okay, we'll take those three that are at the mic. We'll take Dr. Sikwa, Dr. Vipoladi, and I don't see who that person is. Reshibane. We will, we will have to at some point limit because of time. Dr. Sikwa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually rose on, I think it's a point of order. I was looking at the agenda that we just adopted, and I was struggling to find this item. So I thought I would be guided as to where am I in the agenda?
Okay, look at the program again. On the program, there is that item that says, what does it say there? Just after the keynote address. That's the item.
Maybe my problem is I assumed the order is this order. Now I was thinking it's keynote, and now I got lost. Can you help me?
No, thank you. Sorry for that. We decided to stop there. Dr. Vipoladi?
On the item on the floor. It is clear that the matter that you are presenting should align itself to the constitution. One would have thought that we deal with the constitution, pass it, and then speak to that term of office, unless otherwise you give us the reasons why you want to go through that approach without necessarily stating cost as a main reason, and whether this is aligned to the church cycle time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Reshibane?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I'm making a follow-up on Norman.
Closer to the mic, dear sir. Closer to the mic, dear sir. We will only take these people that are standing by their mics, and then we will stop on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I will raise it from the point that Nomen Suboneho did raise, that we were expecting to be updated on some issues that pertains to the session that we had. More especially, then we can go into issues like GC audit, which we don't see at the moment. Then, Mr. Chairman, if we are going to vote new people into office when we know very well that last time when we left the session, we were told there are some misappropriation of church property, and there are some issues that need to be dealt with, then I don't think we are moving in the right direction. My motion then would be it would be better to extend it to November, then the November session will elect in a pro position. So I make a counter motion.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm Sisana Mokwetijana from the Tamahasatral Church. I think when I stood up here, it was actually before the last speaker I had just spoken. So I think, let me state what I had thought I should say before responding to this one. Concerning the fact that the term would otherwise end in November 2022. I think you do.
I stand on a point of order.
Point of order accepted.
As a chairman, the previous speaker on this mic has put up cross a counter motion.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And according to the rules of order, you cannot put on a motion until the main motion has been fully dealt with.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I slipped my mind that he made a motion, and you are right. You are right that this motion will either be voted up or down. Then we can come up with another motion. Thank you. Reshibani can continue?
My point is we need to determine the session that would be held in November 2022. If people were voted into office, what time would be the next session? So that when we extend this side, we extended this side but knowing that we will be back to the cycle of the church, not calling a session in a different time. So that we will be back on the record.
All right, let me attempt to answer that one together with Dr. Vayipoladi's question. The proposal is not to extend the term. The proposal is to start the circle in February. February 1. That is why we think Pastor Saboka mentioned that it will then take three years from February 1, and then the next session, the regular session, will come after three years. Then I think he mentioned the day, the date, and the year. So there is no need, in our view, no need for such to be included in the Constitution. Because we are not extending the session, the timeline or the period. We are just reviewing the circle.
Just to add on what Marute said. That it is very true what we are doing here. It's still in line with the Constitution that we are using. We have not extended the term. That three-year period will still be in effect according to the Constitution. But my point is this one, that our term, the way it goes, is not aligned to any, is not aligned to the BUC or GC because they use the five-year period. At the conference, we use the three-year period. So it's independent from alignment of BUC, the union, or the GC. So we can start it anywhere. Regular session.
Thank you very much. We are going to take this two, and then we'll stop, and then we'll vote on the matter. Yes, sir. Over to you. Oh, okay, you are deferring to him. I can't see. Maybe I know you, but maybe just mention your name.
Yes, I will. Mine is an observation, and it's much like what the first speaker mentioned. Regular meetings have an elective role that they play. The special meeting was to address a gap in between the two sessions. Are we not asserting the responsibility of the regular meeting by us changing the playfield? And therefore making this term, it's like we're resetting the clock for our convenience as a special meeting when the regular meeting, Eliyone, which has that responsibility of appointing. If you look at, look at all the different sections. Whether you look at section, section eight, well, Article 8, Section 3, all the things about election appointment of terms of office. Everything that has to do with terms of offices starts to speak to what is done by the, done at the regular, at the regular meetings. So a lot of things keep saying regular meetings, regular meetings, regular meetings. And once we assert that responsibility, there's a lot within the Constitution that has to be changed. Because terms of offices are attached to regular meetings. The special meeting, or which this is, was to address, and in my humble opinion, is to address the period that is left for us. None of them say all sets in. If we stick to the Constitution, is all that which we can speak to and elect for. If that is not to be the case, then we need to do, as the first speaker said, amend the Constitution to allow us as a special session to then have the prerogative of changing timeframes. And therefore, we are not encroaching.
Thank you very much. So that we keep time. My brother had said this is going to be the last speaker, and then we vote on the matter. Sorry, those of you who are standing on the mics will vote. This is a recommendation, is a proposal. The House will decide.
Chair, I have a question. Does cost still remain a factor when you look at the fact that if it runs for COVID, then the special session will still take place? So it doesn't, in my mind, as I observe, it doesn't really become a factor since, say, COVID was not there as a barrier. We'll still have that session continue. And then having a 10-month difference between sessions doesn't really change the cost because it could have occurred years ago, but because of COVID, it had to be postponed. So what I'm trying to say is the factor of cost doesn't really become that much. I don't know how to put it, but it is not going to be something that is enough to block another session to occur because it could have occurred nonetheless. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have had your comments. I think in addition to what we have stated as the cost implications, we have also indicated the period of service. Just in order for us to give a meaningful service and quality leadership. Any leader will need time to plan and execute something. But if we are electing leaders today, and before they even call the Executive Committee, then we tell them we are now calling a session, it will be, almost lack of a better word, tantamount to waste of people's time and resources. But it is up to the House. We are the highest body here. We can determine that somebody will be in office only eight months, and then we call another session. That's up to us to decide. I had said those are the last speakers. We are ready to vote on this item. Let's vote those that are for this motion sure by lifting up your voting card. That point of order has not been recognized. We are now ready to vote.
Chair, point of order, misrepresentation of what was said by the last speaker. That point of order.
That point of order has not been recognized. We are ready to vote.
Point of procedure.
We are, we are ready to vote, ladies and gentlemen. All those that are in favor of the motion as presented sure by lifting up your voting cards. We are going to request where are the secretaries to count? I don't know whether they are here. Where are they? I don't see them. Okay, it looks like they are done. When you are done, just give me a sign so that I can release the sayings. Okay, all right, you can drop your hands. Those opposed to the motion so by lifting up your cards. Lift it high, lift it high so that they can see. Thank you. It looks like that. Thank you. All right, they are adding up their numbers, and we will hear the results. Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, the results are as follows. The yes, one zero nine, no, nineteen. Let me repeat. Yes, one zero nine, no, nineteen. So it carries. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. We appreciate. Now that the new term is being voted. It goes without saying that the time from November twenty nineteen to date should be accounted for. Therefore, the president is going to give, in his keynote address, a brief report of what happened, and also thereafter, we'll have the Jicas report. We are going to give this time to our conference president to do that. Maybe just for, I said that we have delegates who will go and stand at the mic, and they will keep quiet. We don't know why they are there. We'll continue this side. You need to state why you are there. Especially if there's no motion on the floor.
A point of order. Point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. COVID protocol, more than two hours. We've been here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, we, we were hoping that we will be done by ten thirty. This is ten thirty-three. I think it's in the order. We will have to take a break at this time.
A point of order, Mr. Chair. There was a counter motion.
No, that counter motion cannot work now, because the motion has gone through. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. This time, we are supposed to take a COVID break accordingly, and we will probably stand and take a prayer. Madhu, just that, that mic and pray there.
Father in heaven, we thank you this morning for heavy letters thus far. We're going to take a break. Be back to continue. We continue to invite your presence to lead and guide. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Our, our break will be for twenty minutes, exactly twenty minutes, and then let's be back on time. Thank you very much.
Osele pimola dikele ti Bolela Jesu, bolela Jesu Jesu wize titloko zo ke He understands your pain Tell him everything It is Jesu, bolela Jesu Kele nata laa yahu Aunata lefaye lehube Bolela Jesu yahu Bolela Jesu yahu
Aola pilele lo Oha doha de lo Aorele tine maheke na yahu Osaginele Jesu Osutake matu Tavo eleza kifi Seboi peka ite morena Watena mojako Oreva kamoso Waleho ti Pintele mulu ki Jesu Osina tweyeho Veva kamoso Are chalele pele karite watena mojako Aola pilele lo Ti peti roile se Jesu Kristi ke alukiwa Utavu saleso Arita poene Kobo ne poloko Jesu Kristi uwo emete Oe me tajako Waleho ti Pintele mulu ki Jesu Osina tweyeho Veva kamoso Osina tweyeho Are chalele pele karite watena mojako Are chalele pele karite watena mojako Are chalele pele karite watena mojako
Jesus, you knew me first in your mind Oh Lord, how can I fail from your love? You restore my soul from the deep I reclaim Washed all my sins away and put us all on my name
And when I think of your love And what you've done for me I can say
You build a home in my heart The Messiah
You're my Savior and friend You are mine and I'm yours You're the Alpha and Omega Living in my soul In my soul
I have been away from you
I've been away, so far away
You're a saving, you're a hold of me
Only the love of God didn't let me go
I have wondered
I have thought the world has faced me I'm indebted to you, merciful Savior
I have been redeemed by your blood
Precious blood, redeeming love It has cleansed me from all unrighteousness by your blood, now I'm whole
So Jesus Build a home in my heart
A stronghold in my heart Renew my life Cleans me from within my soul
So Jesus Build a home in my heart
Raise a desert in my heart Bring life into my heart Build a home, build a home
The Messiah
I know you are my Savior I believe you are my Savior
Mine and I'm yours You're the Alpha and Omega
The beginning and the end
Jesus The Messiah
I believe you are my Savior I believe you are my Savior You're the Alpha You're the Alpha The beginning and the end In my soul Purify me, sanctify me, and be in my soul I'm claiming in my soul I need you in my soul Just build a home
Like a star in the sun, I'm coming back to you Coming back with all And the saints would say Take me as a light And the stars be true You will find me, make me whole You will heal my broken hearts and save them Save me today
Lefa uliti bi o tana ssem Lefa uliti bi o tana ssem Leza si chelente lahucho pa Mulu ki waruna kunpiano O ulile taya itanele mucho pe
Amewa ya batu eswa Ho taya ho tira man Zimbo ya ra ra ili Ki ne ho robiwa Masimo wa maswe Pa robi botana ah uta tamaya
Fa upi riwa kalina Jesu ah holele ta Ahwena uta tamaya Fa upi riwa kalina Jesu ah holele ta Ahwena uta tamaya Uye si uta tamaya Uye si uta tamaya Utswele pili Osina po ipofa Jesu abiza Uta tamaya Fa ki fi tiwa kalina Jesu ah taleta Taleta na eka tiya Fa ki fi tiwa kalina Jesu ah taleta Ki ta tamaya Ki ye si ke ta tamaya Ki ta tamaya Ki ye si ke ta tamaya Ki tswele pili Ki sina po ipofa Jesu ankora Ki ta tamaya Ki tswele pili Ki tswele pili Ki tswele pili Ki sina po ipofa Jesu ankora Ki ta tamaya Ki ta tamaya Ki ye si ke ta tamaya Ki ta tamaya
Boele moteng, arabo ele moteng
We did mention that we only have one day
Resa seru buila gware, halibirima rajais
Because remember, this is a special session, not a regular session
Ka gware, putehoeke haphe filim, asse atwa el
So we are going to have a prayer And then we hand over to the conference president to give us the keynote address, which is also a brief report of events or whatever happened between November 2019 to date.
Ra onale tapelo, riverinela, mo ho riwa conference, ora haphe ho, ka bu ku tani, uh, ho bua le ro na, nemopu ye hota na le pe ho ka, sesi di ra getse, ho cha ka, nganatse le watu 2019, ho tse na kumpia
La ras pray
Aratele Marana, limu lu ki yolo rato, libu cholo bu choko, reza na ku e pulu ki ho le boha, re ho le boha la ka ho, re ho li ngateng, ho sala karu simula bu ko pa nu jo, ho ta ku isha la harli tinga, merla pa ya mulu tiwa ra karu sunla, litirelo ya, ta tila kumpia, no, ro pa ketelo pe la, ho re, lo pa cha ku atwa ha, so ha te no tebe ngaya maham, abu a le ro na, obo so ha te bu tepe ma ready te, eh, one pu ye, warba ta lo hanya mulu ki, bua ba ka, ta di chote di maleba, kayu ni, ha ti ke bi bua ho ta ta kumpia, no, re talapile jana karlo pa te minele ho, lamor na na ja sotra sete, amen
Yeah, lady Mary, saha pe kalina la, Jesu Kristi, amen
I greet you once again in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen
The keynote address that I will make, as has already been stated, will also account for the time between 2019 and now
La itza wa me oke ta ho hang, jano, ya ka ho bo lechle, hota buha pe u ita ba hanzele ho beha, uh, di tiro, tse na ho tsa ka, 2019, ho tse na jano
And because of that component, um, ordinarily, a keynote address, you don't expect people to respond to it, but because of that component, that accounts, we will allow for the delegates to interact, uh, at that briefly because of time, with the presentation that I will make
Ha waleha pe, kanakatu a lo ha, hu, ha mo ka niya, adiramalai itza, o nse jana, ha wunki, o kuwiwa ka ba, me kanthaya, ka yeu ya, ho re ho ta wo na epe ho mo hoani, re ta li ta kalu ba kalu lu ku tani, ho re, ho ne li di ka ke lo, kanadi po
And then hopefully, we will vote it as a mini-report
Veru suluwa la gware ta, sa thopo, ya kuwa mo he la, eh, male itza u, ili sekapi ho
Now, I'll make this, I hope it will be very brief, and after I have made this, we will also include a visual component, um, that DVD that will be played briefly
Jano, kita di ra, e ho ya, me ha kita di ramalai itza wa, me ha, me ho tana le o, mo ngahatwa sputanzo samu si kiniya ho, ta shupiwa
Um, ah, ah, I don't know what, thing is too dark here, I can't even see myself. Um, I begin here with the slide, just, no, 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 just a slide, just a slide, please, sorry, yeah, yeah, that's better, that's better. We begin here with the introduction, um, following the postponement of the elective part of the sixth regular session on November 2019 and disruptions that were caused by COVID-19, we are pleased that we now are able to convene and complete the business of the Lord today
Resi mo la ka ke ta pele, ya go re, mara ho ka ho re, eh, puteho, ya bo rataro, ya ba roha, ya ka le, eh, hele, hosta na li di thopo, le mo ho ka ho, ha na le u ita wa tebe ke COVID-19, jano, ri tumela la ho, le re tepe ho, ka serenzi di ramu timonya mora
Now, this brief address will address the following, the life of the Church South Botswana Conference during the period under review, major milestones made by the conference during the period, a comprehensive medium and long-term plans for South Botswana Conference
Ra buaka, bo telo, ya puteho, ya South Botswana Conference, riveri buaka, tere di ho ne, mo le ba kenro ne leu, riveri buaka, eh, moalo, wa le ano, le, le leza ndimo ha, te di malo anyana, ho ya ku pe
Now, in reference to the things that led to the postponement of the 2019 session, we
Ma ba pila tere di le re le, ho tse sulu siwa, hadi thopo, mo puteho ya 2019
As you are all aware about the untenable relationship that then existed between Botswana Union and South Botswana Conference, we are happy to report to you that such issues have been amicably resolved, and we praise the Lord for that
Ya ka, lu itze, lothe ka ha, se mo sese ne, kanaku yeu, se re palé di sa, ho chalela, eh, mo li di thopo, ma ba pila, Botswana no ha kararona le Botswana Union Conference, jano, ka witu melo, lo beha la gware, se mo se bu ete mano, eh, jano, re, re chelete li di
We, as you may be aware, we had cases that after discussions among ourselves, we were able to withdraw from the courts, and we are currently at peace and harmony with each other. Um, we hope that now we can continue with the Lord's business
Lo ka bo lu itze, ho re, ho ne ho na li di, ka ha pe la, ka ma ko ta te ke lo, te re le, mo ho ka ho bui sana, ra dumala na ho re, mo ngale, mo ngayo pe li, ka, ai ho luse, me re chalele li tuwa amore
We believe that as a church, we have learned some things that we will take forward, um, so that such things will not repeat themselves
Ri tumela gware, re le puteho re, tu dile di lo di we, mo ma ipi ke lo ngao, mo te le, ho re, haran tere ha ta la tepele, hadina go bua le
Um, we begin here to speak to you about evangelism under the time, the period under review
Jano, aguen ka bo bole, mo le ba kenle ri bua anglo ne
Because our main mission as a church is evangelism
Ka gware, toma ya ro na le puteho, eh, kuateli, ke bo bole, ho ra ra le ho
As we are all aware, um, this period under review was characterized by restrictions on worship and public gatherings due to COVID-19. However, we praise the Lord that work continued at that slowly because of these restrictions
Na ku eri bua angayo, ne ro tera itze ho re, ke, ho ne, ho na le, di, kanelo, mesepeli, le, ho, uh, ho ta me, ho re, ba toba katlo, ha ne, me la ha, ho nse jalu, re ho ne, ho di ra tiro, uh, ri di ra, mosi, mosu nese
Um, the table there reflects what transpired. Um, when COVID hit, we decided that we will start by, instead of going public campaigns, mobilize people and have cottage crusades, and we, as you see, 2019, we had eighty-nine of them And then during that period, we were able to baptize nine hundred and sixty-nine people. Twenty twenty was a difficult year. We were not able to accomplish anything in the area of evangelism in matters of campaigns and baptism. Twenty twenty-one, we were able to baptize three hundred and thirty-nine. And twenty twenty-two, thirty-two, did I say thirty-two? Yes, thirty-two. We are also cognizant of the fact that evangelism does not only take place through public campaigns. We do also evangelism through other means, like the publishing ministry. And we believe that this arm also pushed evangelism in some way during this period. I won't go through all the figures, but I'll just go to the totals to say in twenty nineteen, we were able to sell three hundred and seventy-five, eight hundred and ninety-three four tabers worth of books to members of our community. And then twenty twenty, the little evangelists, we were still able to go house to house though it was difficult and we were able to sell books worth two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven. And then twenty twenty-one, one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty. Now, during this time, when we realized that we were not able to do evangelism as we traditionally know it, as a conference, we took a decision that we were going to push evangelism through VOP. VOP was going to be our main vehicle for evangelism. And the chart below shows what we were able to achieve during that period from twenty nineteen up to twenty twenty-one. Allow me to just go to the totals in twenty for the period, we have four hundred and seventeen, four thousand seven hundred and eighteen people who were enrolled in certificate. And then those that we enrolled for diploma courses, there were one thousand five hundred and forty-one. And then the baptisms, no, those that graduated for the same period in certificate, there were two thousand nine hundred and ninety. And then for the diploma, we were able to graduate eight hundred and eighty-seven. In total, through this period, we were able to baptize through VOP lessons eighty-three people. Let me speak briefly to the financial indicators and we need to state, make a preamble to say that COVID nineteen affected our finances drastically. The table is before you, I may skip one or two lines, but look at it the best way possible. In twenty nineteen, we were audited and got an unqualified audit for twenty nineteen. And this was, you will be happy to note, but we had, as a conference, gotten unqualified report from twenty seventeen up to twenty nineteen. For the three consecutive years, we have been audited by GICAS and we got unqualified reports. I just want to highlight the working capital during twenty nineteen, it was ninety-seven point seven seven percent and the liquidity was one forty-two point three seven. Gross type income, what we got as type for the period is twenty-two million, four hundred and twenty-three, two zero three. And then you can see there that during that year, we had a deficit of one thousand four hundred and fifty-six. Twenty twenty, to date, has not been audited as yet. But from our audited financial statements, it reflects the working capital of one twenty-three point two one. Liquidity is one, one twenty-six point three three. And then you will notice that our gross type income decreased by over two million during twenty twenty. It was a difficult year and we were only able to get twenty million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, three eighty-two. And then the offerings also were reduced to one million from two million. However, you will notice that operating expenses were reduced partly because of the fact that we are not able to travel and because we are also able to manage the situation. The level of self-support increased from one hundred, the previous year, to one ten. Twenty twenty-one is also not audited as yet. But our working capital is currently, is one thirty-two point two six percent. And our liquidity is at one hundred and thirty-five point two six percent. Gross type decreased a little bit, is twenty million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand. And then the offerings also were decreased during twenty twenty-one to one million and twenty-two thousand. And then our self-support is one hundred and seventeen percent. We can only say, thank, we can only thank the Lord that during this difficult time, we were able to continue with God's work through your support. We also made some little strides in terms of organizational structures. We are pleased to let you know, as you may be aware, that during this period, about two years ago, a year or so, we were able to establish South Botswana Conference ASI chapter, which we believe will enhance the work in South Botswana Conference and capacitate our members in this area. We are also happy that after a very long time, our ABC was audited in twenty nineteen, for twenty nineteen, sorry for that, after a very long time. And we believe that this is a great milestone that we are able to audit our ABC. The following projects were done during this period with the support of South Botswana Churches and different stakeholders. You will be pleased to know that we were able to translate the book Steps to Christ into Sichuan. And we have the Great Controversy, which will be the book of, what do they call it? Book of the Year for the next three years into Sichuan. It's ready for publishing, it has been side tapped. It is ready for publishing, it's just awaiting few funds and so on. And for this, we think that this is a great milestone that we are making if we can have Sichuan books that can go into our community. We are also pleased that during this period, we were able to establish a VOP copy shop where we are able to do small jobs, like for instance, all the materials that you are having in your hands, we did not outsource them, they were done at South Botswana Conference VOP copy shop. Our hope is that we are beginning small while we want to go towards having a printing press or a publishing house that will be able to publish and print bigger books and so on. This is our small steps towards such. We are also happy that we were able to do a pastor's house in Dwaneng. It's almost complete. You will also be happy to know that during this time, we were able to drill and equip a boho in Nyangani, we have water as we speak in Nyangani. So we hope that this will reduce expenses of paying water bills and so on when you go to Nyangani for camp meetings. Many of you will be aware that last year, we piloted a project of Abu Selo Television, which delivered to us our twenty twenty-one camp meeting and conference-wide evangelism campaign. our twenty twenty one camp meeting and conference-wide evangelistic campaign.
Lo le uh lo leba putehi lo ka hakulokala koro ngohola rnera di ra ilo wantha tula kanyo ya te vishene ya Aboselo eneni ya re lerete mota kana warona mora koya re lerete diputehako tama le.
Um, we are pleased to let you know that we have so far equipped our media center to a level where we can be able to continue with this safe for financial constraints.
Me re itume la koli itisegore re reki le chote te di tokia khang te di dirisiwa koridirisiwa te di tokia khang ho ka chale disa kaso ya Aboselo TV ho thayala madiehe. Ako khas.
We currently, eh we are now on another project on Aboselo Red Online Radio Station, which I have been told that it is currently broadcasting this event.
Koneja na resimulutse lele ngo kapele na ne o kela saroma moa sesemo maranari ngai internete le tonnesi bidua Aboselo seke bolela nka thoma mo kore ya kakibu haja na banthe di temo saroma moe.
So, um, if, if the uh Bokra could adjust a few things and allow for community radio station, we would be expanding and within a very short time, we would be saying that we can be able to run a radio station right here. We have all the necessary equipment courtesy of Adventist World Radio.
Yeah, no ha baba laolang eh lekalala puxolele laolang za kashole thayletza nuelin la Bokra baka hetola di wo di nyana di seka enyana aleleha le. Rinali di chumpelo chote te di tokia khang kore re kasimolola saroma moa sesetama anle moa ja no ngisingli internete.
You will be, um, you will remember that la, in twenty twenty, um, we had a lot of, we had a project that we did, a community project that we did in Loloхani, where we partnered with our newly born SBC ASI eh to donate soap, sanitizers, masks, and ninety-three school shoes.
Lo ka hakulokala kore rnera na le tula kanyo kolo Lohani kanga kha twenty twenty eh kayone malo kwa putehane ngare tusa eh kalonelo kota lele la ESI ho putha di para tadi thakudi le ninety-two babo bakoaba le melo ra lidi sanitaze ara eh le le tonne di bitwankole molomo.
Last year, as you are all aware, we had another community project where we reached out to the communities of Middle Pits and Queens, um where um we donated four hundred and thirteen school shoes, five hundred and eighty-nine socks, two hundred toiletries were handed to the community in December twenty twenty one. And we want to thank the Women's Ministries for leading out in this project.
Eh ngohola renilele tula kanyo eh chana ya ya go mesenyaa Middle Pits de Queens eh koneko ra di para tadi thakudi le four hundred and thirteen, lidikausu le five hundred and eighty-nine eh le di tama lo te di dirisiwa mo kui tokome mbo pepa dele two hundred sa releboha le patlabo me lele nenle teletepele mo tula kanyo yeo.
And we believe that through this such, such initiative, we will be able to do ministry Christ way.
Meru itume la kore ka kudi risa manane wanse nja na reta okona kudi rabut re di katela ya katresi.
Ladies and gentlemen, you are aware that for a very long time, we have been talking about um our need to reach out to people with special needs.
Lo ta hakulokala bo talibomma kore kala lebaka nyana rense bua kagore reta kha konna le bu di re di mbatum baba na lidi tokote ya perile.
While we have not made major strides in this area,
Me ere leha resa hitella dilidinci mo kanyenye.
We can celebrate the fact that we have been able to acquire a four hectare plot for, in, in Mateti specifically for special needs. We look forward to developing something there where we will cater for special needs as a conference.
Re lu itisikabu itume la kore re konne ho bona lehe lo la wa tamojadiye tarase nne koridite makasitjana di lenne le ra kuli di riseta se we sesetama lang baba na lidi tokote di ya perile.
Let me rush on quickly to highlight the human resource that we have. I think that the chart is before you.
Ki taranela ro buaka badiri batu ernan le bone.
Currently, we have forty-six uh mem- uh people that work in South Botswana Conference.
Koneja na ernalabatwa le forty-six ba kala South Botswana Conference.
We have uh, um, and those are their qualifications. I won't go into all those.
Eh le di tuta roza bone di ke tonne te ohakena ho chana katone kabupa.
We can only regret that during this period, we lost two workers.
Kamasabibo seba kenzo ne ser la te retekeba di ribali ba beedi.
As you are all aware, we lost Pastor Monsarre on the thirtieth of September twenty twenty.
Renera la tagelewa ke muruti Monsarre kanga kha twenty twenty.
And Pastor Vincent Lenong on the eighth of August.
Erile kotsama ya la ngo kha resnaka la tagelewa ke muruti Monsarre pralagelewa ke muruti Vincent Lenong.
That's, um, we want to just highlight the progress that is being made by our institutions of South Botswana Conference.
Yeah, no rebata ro buaka buchaneka kore eh di kule zaronata South Botswana Conference di di hitelletse.
Um, we have been doing extremely well with our three schools in South Botswana Conference.
Di kule zaronata taro MoSaba Botswana Conference edintse di rasenka ta.
You can trace that for our primary school, every year we have a hundred percent pass.
Re ka levoha mo dimo kore moskule nse sivotlana sa maps eh
What do you call them?
Oh, mo di kule nse te di botana sa mapseli manure eh ha hona ngoana yoruki le ngaketa ha pasa stansere.
And we have been continually improving our pass rate for our secondary school.
Me moro se se kuluanyane rense re tokahala are buaka di palo tavana baba pasa eh.
And of course, this year they did exceptionally well.
Me mono kha ansitera chue.
Um, the only appeal that I can make is that while we have invested resources as a conference in these schools, eh we as Adventists do not have confidence in these institutions.
Buikue ala jonka bu di rang ke ho chaya la kore leha reten te di chumpelo te di kana kana mo bu kotsama isen di kulu te koli ba kaka re ronar le ma sala harise re re di okore hasen te morka te nyamba na mo koso.
I appeal that Adventist education is the best.
Buikue ala jamemogo na ke kore tutu ya se sala akonai pala.
The following are our plans for the conference um that we hope to achieve in the medium to long term.
Yeah, no molu agen lolulee jana lolutang re soloha la koi hitella te di latela.
We have been talking about realignment of the conference into two conferences.
Rense re bua kalu bakanyana ka ho kawaka na conference eh konna di conference tepeedi.
We have been talking about the development uh of Odi plot.
Rense re buaka ho tabulola se tsa sa Odi.
And we have acquired a camp plot and eight hectare plot. We finished the acquisition of that plot. Now we have a challenge to develop that plot.
Konale setza ser nenra beha harise eh eh sewitze mudia tenzalona kukang selo kore yeah, no kesarona eh kalu bakalu merbata kusimola kose tabulolo.
We recognize the need that we need to increase our workforce currently.
Rela mo kala lethoko la kore rope te badiri baba di rela conference.
We want to be deliberate in growing the work, particularly in the western part of the conference.
Rebata ho di ratpiro ya ho ho di satpiro ya rona bo kolo jang ko kalo ye kubiri majakonference re ho di rakatula kanyo ye ri di derilingro.
And we uh, we hope that we can be able to do this by increasing the number of Bible workers eh on, in that area.
Resolo helakore ta kona ho keza badiri baba rutanka ba ebele bakanirba di tandi Global Mission Pioneers.
We also want to develop a strategy for self-sustainability of all our SBC institutions. Currently, our institutions are struggling financially, but we hope that we should be able to develop a strategy that will make sure that they are self-sustainable.
Re le tsa kate konna le lenane o le tla thoma misa kore eh se wele se we sese ka hatasa kasa Botswana Conference eh akis kule akio one conference kabuyone kana resimola ense se we kate sokona ho ike me la kadi na o haribuaka tsa madi kagore konne jana eh haso kore di okona ho ike lasen kehela di chesets.
We, ladies and gentlemen, we also want to fast-track and the church plan and to minister of ministry to minority, minority groups and special needs. Because we have been talking this language, but we have not done very much in this area.
Re le tsa kate ho hehosa le na ne olarona labu di re di mobatumba di tokote di hattehile kagore resa le taranse re buaka konne me eh resa di remo kule kane mo tetenye.
We also are looking at a, a point whereby we will diversify resources, mainstream resources of the conference. Currently, our resource um anchor only around tithe and offerings, looking into projects that will bring resource into the conference.
Re le tsa kape ho kabaka ne me chedi ya di chumpelo ele madi ernan le one kagore konne jana re remelete pepelela mo di tabo sume me okona lidi okwe bo nyana dimotereka di di rang te di karete ne tani lete.
I want to believe that some of this, we will discuss them on plans and resolutions.
Ke di me la kore dimotata tonne reta wisa na katshone haribuaka ma manane o le di chetu sahuya pe.
At this point, we will um ask Brother Muduganele to share the clip that I was talking about. I will, and then before I make a conclusion, we'll just allow him to show that clip is just a seven-minute clip.
Ke tla robasoro kusikahe ha eh reba di param para ngali superitza shantosama tsikinyo.
Following the postponement or the suspension of the elective part of twenty nineteen SBC session as per the action of the session, we are glad that we can now convene to finish the business of the Lord. The period under review covers November twenty nineteen to January twenty twenty-two. The period under review, as we are all aware, had many challenges, including the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Notwithstanding such challenges, which impacted the regular church life admission, there have been some milestones that have been made in the following categories. In October thirty-first, twenty twenty, the following churches were organized. Leta Gen West, Matebeling, and Mudipane. Guenewest District was also established, and there was a conference-wide VOP graduation and a VOP leadership summit. Our communication department mobilized the virtual platforms to spread the gospel. We were blessed to have our first virtual camp meeting and crusades via temporary television station, which was known as Aboselo TV.
Di kariso fatinjeja sibi.
Eh na koya bojelo ke na koe sa ike tan tata ya karu kona di oketo eh lidi teko beha kezi eh me la haunzi jalo ke tanelo ya rona ho chale di sa tomu eh re nezine ho chale di sama hoku amo leemo.
And we are pleased to inform you that our plans to have an online radio station is complete. We have secured a room where a radio station will broadcast from. The room has been soundproofed and meets all required standards. As far as the developments are, we have a bohole and a security fence at Nyangani. Water storage tanks have been installed. We are also thrilled to inform the constituents that the pastor's house in Dwaneng is at ninety-eight percent complete. There's been a completion of the acquisition of the camp plot. Middle Pits and Queens were given four hundred and thirteen school shoes and five hundred and eighty-nine pairs of socks.
Kabo di mpo eh haya ta ho bo eh lebo strila tami etla ele peu etile ngo yala momo yen lemo ba ikutong ayota bangaya amochela eta ele peu etile ngo yala mo ho baba lenhano baba tila ngo tsa di sekao lidi ka ta kore kala ta tila wakana ho lidi kana kana koya boi keti kana hadira hala peu entenjana ene ngadira hala ho kholung hala hadiboro kumitli pi.
SBC donated ten God Paws to Ministry of Youth, Sports, Culture and Development, MICEC. The Health Department conducted the following programs virtually. The Home Care for COVID Patients, COVID-nineteen Symposium on Vaccination, and a Health Refresher.
Self. Here are key words: afraid, naked, and hid myself. This suggests therefore that actually Adam went through what is known as stress-induced changes in me, in the nervous system. He went through what Vincent Visensi identifies as a stress-induced changes in the nervous system. Hence, sin is a medical condition.
The Women's Ministry Department did not fall behind. They carried the banner to conduct virtual all-night prayers, and they celebrated. The Family Department blessed the constituency with a virtual single seminar and family life enrichment programs.
Sometimes we think of single parents as those who have conceived a child out of wedlock.
The Children's Ministries Department was not left behind. They conducted a Leadership Training Certification Level One.
As the leader is to thank people who helped you in these years. Make sure that people who helped you to carry that vacation Bible school, they know you appreciate them, you appreciate that time, you appreciate that commitment.
The Youth Department also conducted a virtual week of prayer and a virtual pathfinder camp.
Whenever we hear about the story of Joshua, we hear about the most popular story. we hear about the most popular story related to him. And that is the Battle of Jericho. But before the Battle of Jericho, Joshua was able to be commissioned into, well, in other, being, yeah, being officially commissioned and being set aside, to be set apart, to be charged up and ready to go to lead this group of people into the promised land.
The ammo department would not be left behind. They had a virtual seminar.
Ellen, why does this to say to the men who are listening to me? The home is an institution of God. God decided that the family circle, father, mother and the children should exist in this world as a part.
There was an ordination and commissioning of workers during this period.
Um, with that, we, because we had said that this, there will be need for interaction, we will move for, uh, acceptance of this presentation. If you saw, please, Mr. Chair. I think you are the chair now. It has been moved, any second there? It has been seconded? Thank you so much. It's the time for discussion. Okay. We'll start in that order. Our elder here and then we come this side, just like that. Okay, I noticed that this are the only ones that are standing to make a statement. Uh, so we'll recognize only those and then we close it there. Thank you. You can go ahead, Mael.
Please remember to introduce yourselves in earlier than at the Tavik Oplote Church. Uh, number one, targets. Uh, you did not, in your report, tell us what the targets were and what the performance was uh, against those targets at the beginning of the period in review. Number two, land. We do have lots of land, but unfortunately, our management strategy for the various parcels of land that we have doesn't seem to be very coordinated or it leaves a bit to be desired. We, we wish to, to hear something a bit more over and above the primary purpose that we are going to use such and such a parcel of land for. Number three, the, uh, report from the session. Uh, I mean, the, the previous session, uh, the reasons for postponement of today's activities, uh, there, there were several reasons that were given, which, uh, were very weighty matters and you, you kind of just brushed them through. And if there was some writing, we would say, at least we can read it. He had to rush through it, but, uh, there has not been any, uh, official report, uh, that accompanies your verbal report that has been finished. So, uh, can we please hear something on those?
Thank you. We'll go here and then at the back and then at the back. You can continue, thank you. Thank you.
Um, three things. One, the pastor's house. I don't know if, if that was the house that you are building for the pastor, but I do believe that, uh, it is a bit too humble for the times that we live in. I will leave it at that. Number two, um, developing of the, 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 uh, uh, the second conference, sorry, uh, dividing the conference into two. Um, we had, we have talked about it at length, but up to now, there hasn't been much progress in that area. If we had started back then to have some visible progress towards, uh, uh, splitting the conference in two, um, we would be a bit more at ease. And then, uh, developing gang, um, I don't know how much we spend on, on tents and such when we go for camp meeting, but whatever amount it is, 50,000, we should just learn to put that money into permanent development rather than use temporary structures at a great expense year after year.
Okay, let's just make this announcement that the three minutes that are allocated to each delegate, it includes for you, the speaker, and also the translation. So if you don't accommodate that, it means that you don't want the other people to hear. So not translate if the time does not allow. Thank you. We'll go then.
Okay. Yame iti wa ganzele ba diri me buhulu yamba rutu. Kiko bawi zogore se alo sa runarle sa otsanakonfrense sa baruti. Otsanakore bernale baruti ba lekai, rechota kaba lekai. Le gori mopero nyaa omuruti. Ka agizen kade onilele resignation ya muruti omongue. Me wa amile gora tlayo ele nten kia baruti baba edibane baratu reana. Me osa tewawa war resignation. Engwe kia mandr group mentore, onu regruta yang monako ye kai. Ore bana baila ore baha rebo sa ore abaka tsela seruti. Re kona goba haraba. Ya woyalo ke tshaya lo kiri siriti sa baruti ba orna nasantwenya. Eh, balebeha basoko la basutlaga abana maji. Kene kiko bawara o kona lega lewya gola lebela dibuka leba yunene gora. Ahalo kaka loa ira provision ya goba adimadi lo ni tedi interest free ba sego di ba inke. Reberi kama ore erka batse la ngaba sa ridwe le gora. Le bana baka ona goliweha ya kabatu kia le gora.
Um, number one, he was asking about, uh, sorry. Yes, pastors, uh, workforce. How many pastors do we have? And, uh, how do you recruit pastors? So that we can tell the young people who want to join the ministry. And also, I, I saw in your report, you mentioned, uh, two pastors who died, but you, you didn't say anything about any, um, resignations. And I do know of at least one pastor who resigned. And then, um, when it comes to, uh, uh, conditions of service, is there a way that you and the union can sit together and look at how to offer pastors interest-free loans? So that their, uh, life conditions can improve somewhat? Because right now, uh, their life conditions are really terrible, in my opinion.
Thank you. We go to the last one. After this one, uh, the pastor will answer and then we take the other, uh, speaker.
Yijuli amatale from Broadhurst. Two observations. The first one is that in our development as a conference, we never consider the teachers. They never, I've never heard of any teacher's quarters, a house. When I go to the conference, they have seen that there are yards, which many, many years were meant for teachers. It is very important that we accommodate, we cater for our teachers if they have to produce good results. The other one is that as a world church, we are concerned about the ever widening margin between the types and offerings. What strategies as a conference are we putting forth? We'll ever be complaining that there's no money. And I think it's high time we come up with vibrant strategies, starting from our churches, going upwards. So that this issue, I for one, I know that my prayer is that my offering be more than the type. And if we can get that motivation, as a, a strategy that is owned by the conference, I think will go along with. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll request those that are at the marks to just sit for a few minutes. We have noted you. As soon as the pastor is done, we will allow you to speak. Thank you. Don't go far. Just said.
I've heard your comments and questions. They are all in order. As for targets, that is our, uh, provision. We will do likewise next time and give our set targets and how we performed against the targets. While it is true that we did not go into detail about the prevailing issues that, uh, led to the postponement of today's activities in 2019, please also note that because of time, we decided to give an, a, a abbreviated report, uh, hoping that you would agree with us that what is important is that we sat down and agreed to move forward in peace, working together.
We even had camps there, we even had donations and pledges. Now we seem to be starting afresh. Where is the continuity of the work that we are planning? Thank you.
Ngakulala yantha, sorry.
Online.
Online.
Okay.
Alright. Um, dipotwadin ne yantha ekaha ho, ho, ho dira kwayebo le papaji moma ranyani ngai internet. Tore, mola konya covidiba tawalebanzi badni lelele tseno ka hori kisa moma ranyani ngai internet. Me rona ko ABC, okare le tseno la runale wala kotlas. Ri dira en, hori rebone hori ler na rukhana ho, ho, ho noamoro eh teki swaya di loka internet. Ya bo be di eh, sabo choho, okare pekwa yaga ho etu dile sabo choho merle mona konye le wakarabato. Babu le ketsiwa amakala malakasabo choho, hawa buaka counseling center, haritsoho re arre na lema noa. Ho dira klini kika na lelelele pehela lele katu sambo choho ah hati ngoho. Ya bo raro OD. Eh, ho, ho kabakanya, ho kabakanya eh letseno.
Eh, korare na koiile eh, reta biraku, ale. Eh, dumelang putia. Ki bidua kote abute kiarile, kote kere kenyanyosi. Ken hapedi hellah. Um, san sayke wana hako padile mopehong hori, ho tanale hori tiroya tulusiwe eh, kobupirim. Ano kuti wupirim eh, kiwupirim. So potwa me kore ah, rona kakwa no mo botwana, dakar wana koma hati ngama we eh, honale mopetengke wane di independent or self-supporting ministries. Arna kakwa no ra adiyamokela. Mi bilaharsa adiyamokela, er san se richeru keng, rekayira janghor, rukhano kobe kisa na na bo. Hori tiroya skaimela SBC hellah. Se se ngakape kore, mo kanyenge inti biwa khejaidadi aketali. Um, ilaha kanyepa ketsi ho le ma shi. Diputia wane di ayitsiwe, hora kanyenzi jana, baho la ne ba bidiwa, raitsi kha. So jalo he, kele swey kanna hori are sarare ihiti le riwi sanse. Ako rona riwepe ho etle tsensinle. Kamu kalo, leka kubua, hori nyami, renera hella, hori ntsi jana, le jana, le jana. Etsanana, hella hori nyakanyo riwi le ihiti, are tsu lenke tiro, entzwa inele kha. Inele atsara, hori tiroya katsalea. Amen.
Amen.
Two issues. Um, I think I'm getting tired. Eh, number one, self-supporting ministries. Are we open to self-supporting ministries in this country or in this conference? And if not, what is holding us back from uh, accepting their input into the work? So that we are not overly burdened. Number two, uh, those issues that my sister talked about with the union. Uh, at the time, the conference took the time to inform the churches formally with letters and calling of elders and everything. Uh, and I believe it is also proper that even after however they have been resolved, the same should happen. The conference should come back to the churches in the same manner, uh, by writing, by inviting people to come and accept uh, the message and relay to the church. That this is how the, the issues were resolved, this is how we went about it. Uh, particularly because there were issues that actually ground the work to a halt.
Thank you. Emma, at the back.
Good morning, um, minentlemthlanga from Molepolule Central Church. Uh, got a number of questions or comments. Um, the first one um relates to the letter, of course, we received of the untenable conditions that had uh surfaced between the SBC and the union. Uh, maybe we need to be told or, and that is some highlights on the challenges that were there such that um, that could cause this friction that ended up uh affecting the church at large. Because I think we should be um aware of what happened so that even those who are coming into the office, maybe can be aware of what happened such that it's not repeated again. And again, um, we understand that the BU president resigned. Does it mean that his resignation then um made um the, 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 the workable conditions to be resolved? Because maybe he had left the office in that regard. So maybe we need to know so that maybe those who are coming into the office, they know that um, what has been going on. And again, is the, was it according to policy? Uh, maybe that maybe BU was not following or SBC so that in the current BU president can be protected. So that we know exactly, does it mean that SBC if they fall off with BU, they can just um, um make relations, you know, the way they are? And um, looking at the, 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 the financials, I thought maybe we would have, even if un-audited, a balance sheet where we know the breakdown of expenditure and the income. Or if there's no balance sheet, income and expenditure, expenditure statement so that we know exactly what has been happening since it's more than two years or plus. Looking at the expenditure, there was eighteen million plus, thirteen million plus and twelve billion plus respectively. And twenty twenty one, I think was twelve million. So I was asking myself that it doesn't look like COVID really affected the expenditure. Cause you, the reporter was saying that there was some limitations as the work of the Lord could not be done according to.
Time up. There will be translation. At this time, we're going to pause for Mariki to respond. We see that there are only how many, three that are standing. Maybe we can ask the one at the back to move to the other mic so that we concluded there.
Thank you very much, um. The councili dibuansee eh, dibot hokwa, kiri councili sipan hori le, le nyoretsi eh, hori ho, nelenakoya, ho buya di lo se sothe. Jano ka, thaya hori harana ye wene nakoya. Di lo se di ngakarakwa, na hori ri di, ri di buwe, iseho rinalima ikelelo, na hori ri di, ri di li time, ho ta ri di hite. Me le kanthayala ya hori eh, hakere ki buya, kirele karawiya. Going to highlight eh some things, jano um. Ki kanthaya wene ho, hori harana nakueka lo, rasa buya di lo se di ntsi jakanalelele di.
If only we had the time, we would go into the minutest detail of some of the things that you are asking about. But unfortunately, we do not have the time in the abbreviated session we are having today.
Um, kanyahor withdrawal ale rai, keta hori, hakanale casei ko court. Batbaka na hori babu isanye, ba, ba regnya, kanye ele jano, rekopa hori, eh hulusiwe po, kona moriring, ho dira hetsi. Eh hulusi, eh hulusiwe reta eh buya kwa no moloha pey in rona, eska yachale.
Uh, as for the significance of the withdrawal of cases, uh, it happens eh, 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 in legal circles. That when there's an issue before a court, uh, whoever brought the issue can withdraw and opt to discuss with the other party uh, in a setting outside of court. And this is what has happened here.
Ho ba maru hori hara, behaka, retention shipi eh, hori retention shipi, inti jang, um, hakizora ki mista hakaya slide, this is, le na kanale slide, this is super. Um, um, membership eh, se wasi, super hori. Me head count, kasa batamwele, mo head count ya rona eh, ho ha le for that court, ankarni lewuka, three thousand and something, three thousand and something head count. Then haritora, yo ne head count yo ne, yo ne retention shipi hakitsi. Me um, one, we still have to do a lot more di area regyo neya retention shipi eh, le hori, ri behe, sanse.
Uh, regarding retention, uh, my apologies, I seem to have missed displaying the slide that showed that uh, we had ex-membership. But when it came to counting the number of people at church, we had about three thousand uh, in that period. And so, I don't know if that three thousand can be taken as those that we have retained or if there is another explanation that can be found for those numbers.
Eh, honale, kanyahori, eh, rona rasa mahalek, hobo hakala bakaya kati online services eh, ho ba maruri um, ilaha covidi eh, eh, iribeta, rabo rasa lari. Kala kofa, the weather really paralyzed a little bit eh, riboret kanya um, batbaka wa na liditompe lo ho, ho we. Wane ba hakese pele, mi keta hori mo kubua, kikakolo ya hori. In future, are, are there any online services? Kira hori yo raya mokela, reta leka hori diri jalo.
We accept the advice to start our own uh, online platforms where we can benefit uh, the way that we see others have benefited.
Ha, ribuaka, di counseling center le di klini kise, hori arre nale, plan ya hori kana le toni. Ki ngwaya di lo se ri, kadiya kanya ho didi, oneer na lemo hobo loa hori, redevelop the counseling center, eh, rona tuhatleba. Meja kakipuyi ya modi kanyenzi di ngwe eh, restraining factor ki di finances.
Uh, counseling centers and clinics, we go back to the financial uh, constraints. Uh, we, we, we currently do not have the funds to develop it to a level that we would like.
Re kiarile um, eh, nyat before keta kaya, uno wileka ya hori rilo, rita hori what is acceptable? Keta hori kithuto eleka itsehe dang, eh, ele bible study, ki itse hori um. Honale chapara, most more councils on stewardship, eh, katshehe wankodi kere keng, raska dira bible study hano um, hori what is acceptable? Taha tisadere resourcesi, mo kere kenyasabat.
As for acceptable fundraising methods, there is a chapter in the book Councils on Stewardship that I believe can be used as a resource. Uh, probably on a Sabbath afternoon, have a bible study in your church and uh, get councils from that book.
Ho ba maru hori kanya OD, isalaka eh, me le ba.
It is true that we have been uh, on pause for a long time regarding OD.
Um, without going more di details inside yo ne kore. Um, kanya OD, renare misi se, kiehoru ho batteha impact assessment, rabo rabo wana mongoyo, naridirela impact assessmentte, me leha, batba dia. Ki wana akere le patalate. Basakho dira di adjustmentinga, na baka nya, ale, 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 ha, hori netwe, heti eh, laharan tswar na rastana, ma diha, horu tsorata, ho dira in. Um, um, moto tengava apalwa, kieho baka nya di lo se, naridilosan santra di baka nya eh, hompye no, hori more processing. Ya u dumete hori, wa hori bisetama dia impact assessmentte, arnera mo dwezi um, onea oho, whora hori kanye, ra ho warisimolasi, xhaape, kahothoka le seho.
Regarding uh, the, the property at OD, we had paused because we were, we had commissioned an environmental impact assessment study. And the one commissioned to do the study was subsequently given a response by the government department relevant to those things. And uh, they couldn't respond adequately to the assessments made by the government. And we are at a point where they are going to reimburse us what we spent on that uh, study so that we can start from the beginning. Unfortunately.
Re kiarile yo na abo zakadi self-supporting ministry um, kika, ya hela kere. South Botswana Conference is a part of the World Church. Sekere kasa vata isi dumela, internationally, really South Botswana Conference, ra isi dumela. Hari, harida aru hiserle, hori rona mo South Botswana Conference, ha World Church yo ne, eh, accepta, the self-supporting, rona de rasa adiyamokela. Nyaa, honale di principal study sipan hori, diyamokela wajang, the self-supporting ministry, tedi ntsinjalo, mi kika thoma misa hori. Rona release South Botswana Conference, rebontabo we, ya kere kasa vata, mo lehasen kabopara. Sangala sangala sasigwa na, ki kere kasa vata, ra, na lema ikelewa, horu sidirha.
Regarding eh, self-supporting ministries, let me affirm that South Botswana Conference is a conference in the Botswana Union, which is a part of the Southern African Indian Ocean Division of the General Conference. Which means whatever other Adventists under the General Conference believe, we also believe, we are not a rogue organization. There are guidelines uh, regarding how self-supporting ministries work in tandem with the church. And if those are not followed, we cannot recognize.
The content and resu, ki mamatlanga, ki se rekabu ya ngela kabukusha ngene rari. Eh, haraka rana le nakwa, ho kavara di issues se sothe um, sa, dakana lele, se horu, ho wera katsa, na more di details in sothe, dakana, na di nankola, kanthaya nako, yakahompyo ne, ki wana horu na kwa, rona ericha ise tata. Eh, me onee, ruduli.
We were not able once again because of time constraints to raise or respond to some of the issues that uh, Sister Amphanga mentioned, but uh, we have heard.
Thank you. We are going to ask that uh, our translators, they can come and help. Uh, we see he's tired and then in that manner, we will take her and then two, and then we go to the back. This will be the last round and then we go to the next side.
Eh, dumelang, um, ki elan senye, utso Hukunzi SDA Church. Um, kisasi ki utule, di potes soche, senere di buiwa, di bewa hatale haro, na me. Kya diyamokha, ri diyamokhaitsi. Hela ke, nelaho hori, di lo se di wane fasakasa, kamen xinguwa, dakana, renseri, sule heswa, wedi wagen se di, delay. Ya no, wo di future planning eh, go, kala hari south, kala hari north, kya realo. Toata mo, ni future planning, ni araka two, twenty nineteen, rora repromise youa, hori. Eh, retinyagi se, hori, di community services senere ri, re-identify le eh, di needs star, batbaka wana, ri dira la di crusade ite. Nediyaka za eh, eh, renovation eh, and extension of preschool, kolokhade. Ke ka ho hela yene, ya sawa ke tiho, eto na yano, labala ho, eybona, labonawale tla tusamoho yo ne, la esinyamodi planning in twenty nineteen. Na la remensina, la, 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 la emensina, co-camp meeting, hori, emodi planning, ya no hakya utka, le buwa. Hamoho le, le hori kelaba, na ba hu, huwe primary hostel, washing machine, onee kako, kala hari north. Eh, onea mo, kya utka hori, ma dike onele tchoko, lena lana, lele to na tata, neke re, hakya utka di mensina, ke kupa hori, adi sungo mo planning. Rese hela ha, ri utule hori, di mo planning, de atse le di siwa, hadi kathelo koma ra, relebo salan, kamplota yele, hori onee etabwe, ya votse le di siwa. Savo hela, kia hori ke kupa.
Okay, thank you. We will go to delegate at the back. Alda, you can continue.
Thank you, Mudla Stilo, kobo ompile saba ka, sesa hano, na ki bidua wale chisa role, eh, utso akalkonten.
Eh, ri utule di peho, talo na la ha totara, li, ri, li bi na kwa, ri, ri sete mora. Me hela, ite kilo onee le, mohe, kwa hela hori. Totaka na, hori, ba rutiba ba, tama ya, mko pele, ja ka, ba bidiwa. Eh, hadwa bidiwa? Eh, mayta mo yo, tota hori thoka kala hori, koba kona le ma tu, aile hori, ba kana mo ho one. Hona le, hona le, sen, sen sa, pi amu rutia akilu enko, kala hadi one. Hona le, pi amu rutia akilu enko, kala hadi, ko kansi two, kansi one. Me, hama ite kona, hona hala, no hoka, na butu kah hori. Honelintu ko Huckunzi amu ruti, honelintu ko, ko Charles Healy. Hori ama rutire harviya na re, ho kaba turo, biyesa ko Jesus Christi. Me kabo kona le, o ba kata ngoh, kana pu te, ho haese na mu ruti wa haitsu, ke bo ta ta re tse, bo ta. Haite, ha ekwa pane, me hela mu rutia le te, hona butu kah ta. Ya no, eh, renale, sen sa kono ya, sen lo hori, ra ito, renbo de, sa di, cha terisa akiwie. Bo, hola hala hara ka, onea hori, eh, la, 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 tsa lo tsa, la, 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 ta ta ya. Bo, hola lo onea hori, bo karri thusa, mama na ne un, alo na. Ya no, kutule hela hori, hatte, may di hayo, may di eh, hai. Me hela, akoriskena ri, 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 tarisa moroalo, obu kete ke. Hone, hompye na runa le, runa li tante ya na ha, conference zalen, kabi, ujala ya na ra ta na one. May di ar, 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 ha, raja, na ka kansi amu ruti. Thank you, Mudla Mai.
Thank you.
Um, regarding basically housing for pastors, uh, the long and short, let's have, uh, housing for even our global mission pioneers and build a house in Huckunzi for the pastor so that there is a shepherd for the flock, so that the flock does not scatter.
Thank you. Ada?
Uh, my name is Edison Meñere from Molepolore Church. I've got only two items, as the other items have already been highlighted. The first one is a comment concerning all of us. Eh, in the presentation by our, our, our conference president, eh, there was this to say, we as Seventh-day Adventists, we do not easily enroll our children with SDA schools. I had been a teacher at one time at Emmanuel in Molepolore. One year I was teaching twenty-six students. There were only two Seventh-day Adventist children whose parents were working at the same school. And, uh, the following year, I had eighteen students. Again, there were only two Seventh-day Adventist children. But we have seen, that is hundred percent, hundred percent MAPS and EAA. Let us encourage ourselves, because they are going to do well following that one. The second item, it has already been highlighted, but I want to just, eh, put a finger on two things. Eh, an example, where I am, I'm stewardship leader and there's an example of a receipt, eh, not a receipt, the trust funds as they are going to the office. The tithe was eighteen thousand and the hundreds of pulas, offering was nine hundred and sixty-eight pula. I don't know if we are happy with that. Eh, when the Bible says robbing God, why do we remove the side of offerings? There is a receipt that, I'll give you an example. One gave a family, they gave a receipt, the total was two thousand. Of the two thousand, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four was tithe. Offering was thirty-six, just to make the, eh, two thousand complete. And we have some people that are given positions because they are in the treacherous book, but offering is zero. Where do we put the issue of robbing God? It's only tithe and not this other side. Let us take this message. Thank you.
Kana, tha, ene le kaha, di kuele, uh, ke bua, kena le bui, may, may ite mohele, wa hori, kene, keli mu rutin, si ko Emmanuel, uh, ke rutin sa, ba na ba le twenty-six, ba le tu, hela le, onee ba, ba na ba masa, ba ta, ibile kah hori, ba ta di ba, onee ba, ne ba, re kah onee ho, ma hao la te, la ne, ba le eighteen still, ba le tu, hela le, ba, ba, ba na ba masa, ba ta, ba re, ma hale, ma haa, hundred percent pastor, ita ko ri se, mba na, ku di, ku le, ntsa ro. Ya bu be di, di sa bu sume di di kabel, eh.
It's time up. It's time up. Thank you so much. Eh, as the pastor is coming to answer these questions, eh, we know that we have spent more than two hours here. We are going to request that we allow the Jika's report to be given so that as we take a break, at least we would have received that report.
Re, ka, lo ko pa, hori leha, na ko esetere, si le, re, re, le te le le, pe ho ya, Jika, ya la fatala General Conference, la, la, ku pa di kualo, hori hiwe, ke onee rebe, reka, reka, tsa.
Procedure chair.
Thank you.
Point of procedure. Thank you, chair. Eh, please guide us as to how best the meeting should go. In the last session, there was a point that was raised by the chair concerning Mazza's report, which had a huge contribution why we are having this special session. As I'm hearing the delegates, they are interested in that part, the Mazza's, not the courts, the Mazza's. And I don't know if I get it correctly, but it seems like we don't have time. Last time we had a time to postpone the session, but today when we need clarity, there is no time. Please guide the meeting as to how best to be on light, in proper light of that issue that caused a huge fight in the Adventist Church in Botswana. Thank you, chair.
Thank you very much. Sure, if, uh, that was, that was a point of procedure.
He wanted to make a point.
That's not a point of procedure. Um, ma ke, heti kala be, di posa te, ndibiliha, ma se nyee, ubileka, di solos, te, ndibili, ntsa kolo kwa be, le, le, go hu, hu kuwe, eh, kere, eh, di community project te, kana, kiri lo ja kali, kinte, kiri nankola. Kiri lo tse, le, hori. Runar le, kere ke, re, identifier di needs, re ba retako, pu te ho, re la, ra, re. Hona le, ba na, komitli piti, re kopa hori, le ba contributile di ta. Abel, ona le, ntsa di ta. Kere ke, ha, na budgete, ya hori, kela, bat ba o di ta. Onea mo, onee, kati ra kala, galo kwa. Na la identifier di project te, ra di promo uta, me hua, abo na la hori, lo na le, le pu te ho, na lasa kala, na le, kate ho. Ya ho, ya ho, supporta di project te. Ya no, kihone ka mo hompye, no, ho sa na mpewa epe, ka, so, ka so sa, osale, kabe le hu, hu kuwe. Keta hori, ya ha, wil chi, re, utule, hori, una re, ora ne la, hori, te, le, mo hajo, hori, ka ni te, ho, ha, ma tu, abar rutimoma, hello, na, haro lo, ka ni. Eh, Meñere, onea, onea re, onea komenta, hori, ar, tsa le, ho supporta, di ko le, ta, si sabata, kia lebo.
Thank you so much.
Um, ra lebo.
And, uh, at this time, we're going to give you two hour. Oh, we need to vote on this. All in favor, show by raising up your hearts.
Rothe, baru dumala, na, hua, mohe la.
This is a report and we cannot address.
Super, kahu, chuleka di garata. Pe ho ya, ha, mu di ga, mu kani wa tim.
Thank you so much. Anyone against by the same, by the same sign, raise up your right, your card.
Baba ba katanong.
Thank you so much. It carries.
Ra lebo, hamo hopolo, hiti.
This is the time for Jika's report.
Ya no, hota la te la, pe ho ya, ba dupi, otoa gon do khol.
Okay, I'm very short. Thank you. I think it's, good afternoon, everyone.
Melan Lothe.
My name is Joy Mukotedi with the General Conference Audit Service.
Ki bidiwa, Joy Mukotedi, kiri la, mo, ho, ba, di kualo, ba, do kbo ka.
Okay, so I'm here to give the different, um, to give the audit report that was given for the year that we engaged to audit.
Eh, ke hano, ho disa pe ho, ya hara di le, tiro, ho ya ma te.
Before I do that, I think, um, I've explained this in the previous sessions as well, that there are two main types of audit opinions.
Eh, hona le, me hopolo, eh, insiwa, onya ha, oseka, seka di buka.
There's an unmodified opinion.
Hona le, pe ho ele, hori, kaya na ma bak. Iti pe pa he.
Uh huh, okay. The auditor has issued this opinion to sho, show that the financial statements have been prepared in all material respects and comply with accounting standards being used and the applicable regulation.
Mo ra, hori, di kualo, di za ma isuwa, kame la one, ya, kito, ya tiro, ya di buka za ma.
Okay, and then on the modified opinions, we've got three of them.
Ya no, mo hopolo ele, hori, wa, bo, hona le di chay odi, ngwe, te, di sa, itu medising.
There's a qualified opinion.
Hona le, ye, ele, hori, ya, be, hi lu, me, su pi lo ma ba ka, axa man sing.
And in this one, we say that everything's okay, even if there's maybe an aspect that is not okay.
Eh, ki ja, ke, kela, luci.
Okay, and then there's an adverse opinion.
Obu, ona le, mo hopolo, o, o ma, sweh.
And here we're saying that there are misstatements and we are able to quantify them, they are material and they are pervasive.
Obu, su piwa, ya lo, hori, kahu, di lo, ndibuka, kate, hasi mo kwa, mohele, sa ha, be di poso zeo, di insiwa, di wa, mo po no, mo te zo.
Then the last one is the disclaimer of opinion.
Ya no, ya bo hela, kiyo ele, hori, wa, bo, itu thora, unsa, mo hopolo, ka ke.
He's explained it well. Where we withdraw, we are not able to give an opinion.
Ebele, hori, hona ma, ho, wa, pe, ki ma lele, he.
Because we don't have, um, adequate supporting documentation to support or confirm those amounts on the, on the financial.
Ele hori, di bambi, ri, le, bu su pi wa, tsa, ya, hori, ha, du pa, hona ka, ha, ka re, ya, kiri, le, tiro, sen, te, ka, na, hakea, idra sen.
Um, I am pleased to announce that, um, for the year that we engage in twenty nineteen,
Ki dumela ya, na, hori, mo wa he, ye, ya, twenty nineteen, ene, ri, di ra tiro, ye.
Um, we're able to issue an unmodified opinion or unqualified opinion.
Runar sa, ke ho hela, eh, pe ba, esenaba, na ba, pe ho.
Um, in twenty twenty, we're not able to audit because of the government directive that the, um, the government needed to audit all the Adventist institutions. So that's why, um, Pastor Cabo indicated that there was no audit for twenty twenty.
Ya, ngangwa hawa, twenty twenty, re le ba, JC, arakara, di ra tiro, ya, runa. Kawa na ma ba ka, o, asem, o, tena, si, be ilu, ke, horu mandi.
Okay, and then for the twenty twenty-one audit, obviously, we're gonna audit them this year. So we're gonna audit the, the, the two years this year in twenty twenty-two.
Ya no, ni ta, re, monua, hara, kudi ra, pe ho, ya, twenty twenty, kira ta, thobo, bu du pi ba, di kualo, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. I'm not sure, I, I don't, I'll just read, you don't, no, no, don't need to translate. I'll just read the, the opinion there. We have audited the special purpose financial statements of South Botswana Conference of Seventh-day, um, Adventists, which comprise the statements of financial position and the special, the special purpose statements of financial activity, changes in net assets and statements of cash flows for the years then ended, and notes to the financial statements. In our opinion, as auditors of the General Conference of Seventh-day Adventists, their company financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the organization as of thirty-first December twenty nineteen and its financial performance and its cash flows for the year then ended, in accordance with international financial reporting standards adopted by the Seventh-day Adventist denomination. Thank you very much.
Amen. Pe ho hela ka bu kuchwa, ne, ke, so, isu buke, ya, na, hori. Bu onee, le ba dupi, ba ne, ba le, mo, ta, hori, di kualo, le za ma iso, ho se tu, mo ra ho, kaha di buka, penzo, hori, di diro, kate. Me, kaba, ka ba, na le, mo hopolo, ope, wa, ho, di lo, di so ka, me, katsa la it. Akere ke, za horu, mu ku le, ba lo tsa ma.
Thank you. I move, Pastor Chair, that this report be accepted as presented.
Ki su ti sa, hori, pe ho ye, ya mohele, ja ka, hara, be ilu, pe. Ho su ti si zeo, yo, tsa tsa.
There are one or two comments, just limit them to two, because of time. Yeah, those, those, those two is all we will take.
Eh, di ka ke, la, re ne la, ba le, ba be di, ho, bo, za, ha, ke.
Dr. Sigwa.
In your report, you were showing that for the first time, ABC was audited. I, so I'm wondering whether that audit of ABC is part of what we are talking about and, cause we didn't say anything about what is the opinion or what is happening at ABC. I thought that was coming up. Thank you.
Okay. The next. Dumelang Guter.
I had said two, there's only that we will take that brother and that will be all.
Eh, ina la me, ki lo, na, toki, otoa konyo, luci. Na, mo hopo la me, wa, mana le, sen, ten si, buiwa, ele, pe ho, la, ra, mu rutis, ro. Hori, kana tota, hala, hori, klo, kwa ba di, lo, hompye, ku ba, na, hori, ba, te, ba, ro, hori. The next three years. Ho, thoka, hori, re ne le, pe ho, ye, ne, ye, ya, audita, ma, di, kana, onea, re, audita, oneu, bua, hala, re, ya, ra, la. Re ba ta, keni, ya, ma, di, eh, ya, mana, lisika, abere, bona, abere, compare, ya Mazza's. Ono, hori, mira, hana, hana, le, inform di decisiona, ho, vote, bat ba, la, hori. We are sure they have been cleared. Otherwise, we are going to vote again, people into the office, ba la, hori. Somehow, maybe they are going to repeat, se le, hori, se le, stola kere, ya kan di, wa, kere, ke, ki la, ra, ta, oso. Therefore, I move, we don't go until we resolve issue, re, bona, abere, onea, ka, vote, ar, na, le, information.
Thank you very much. Um, taha hori, the motion on the floor is to accept the audit report as presented.
Eh, mo hopolo, oro, be ilu, mpelik, hori, ya, mo hele, pe ho, ya, ba, dupi, ba di, muka.
Uh, I don't know if you are able to speak to the issue of, uh, the ABC.
Um, thank you very much. Yes, we did audit the ABC and, um, for the ABC, we issued, remember, it, it was, it was the first audit after a long, long time, we issued a disclaimer of opinion.
Eh, ya no, pe ho, ye, ne, insiwa, mapabili, marekse, za, runa, di guka, ye, ne, le, hori, di, i, kate, ki, ni ba, biri, ne, di kaya, la, hori, da, ganza, mo hopo, bu su pi.
I think we are ready to, I think we are ready to vote. We had said we are taking two, because of time. We are taking, we are running behind time, uh.
I recognize, I recognize that, um, we are, we have not, underprivileged motions, um, it's, it's.
Yeah, wait, brother, you, you, you have not been recognized. Yes, take your seat. Thank you very much. We are ready to vote to accept the Jika's report as presented. All in favor, show by lifting up your hand, your voting cards.
Baba ra, mohe la, ndi reporter, rega, chuleza, di garata.
Those that are against, same sign.
Baba re, nya, hara, ya, mohele.
Thank you very much.
Ra lebo.
I, yes, let me hand over to you, over to you. Okay, thank you so much.
Eh, ra lebo.
We are really behind time.
Ri si lu, ke na ku.
Our plan was that, uh, by eleven or twelve, we should have handed over to the union so that they can do the election part.
Eh, kere, zo, le, thula, kanyone, le, hori, re, kana ku, hale, sume le, mo, zo, re, re, ne, ziba, yune, ne, stilo, hori, ya no, ba, za ma ise, eh, kaha ba, thonzo, o, za ma ise, kate.
And the ball is still, and, uh, on our court.
Ya no, rasan, sa, re, ngapati, te, hala, stilo, ya.
We are left with one item which we will do after lunch.
Pesale, ze, ke, ntlale, un, eh, reta, edira, mo ra, kadi, o, za, mutsa, ha, re.
They proposed amendments to the constitution and bylaws.
Eh, kihori, ho, seka, seka, malao, mo, te, o, le, me la one.
So we are going to go for lunch.
Reta, ya, ya, no, di jo, ntsa, mutsa, ha, re.
And please, we request that by two o'clock, we should be seated here, we should be here.
Re, ko pa, hori, re, kana ku, abu, be di, hala, mu, paten, re, re, ntsa, ha, ha.
So we are going to have a prayer, which will also include the prayer for food.
Re, di le, ho, za, ta, pe, lo, re, be, ra, la, li, di, jo.
Let's ask Pastor, uh, Moses Malibala to pray for us. Use that mic, Muruti, there.
Malibala.
And also pray for food.
Taveli, tseho.
Pralam, maski, Muruti.
Arapeling. Morana, lumukuaka, ra, ho, la, boha. Ro, la, bo, kala, zo, chhe, zo, se, se, o, ri, di, di, re, si, ho, ta, ho, sa, na, na, kongi. Zo, chhe, te, ri, di, wi, sa, ntsi, mora. Amo, ha, ho, a, sa, le, le, ar, ho, he, ho, te, la, ra, taro, ko, pa, na, kana ku, ka, bo, bechi. Sa, ho, a, sa, si, yo, sa, ya, mo, he, la, lo, na, me, bile, ta, mo, kala, kati, so, Christi. Amen.
Amen. As we leave, those that are satanizing this place, please do that.
Eh, ya no, hara, itwa, runa, ba, lo, thoko, me, ten, le, he, le, le, di, ran, kaha, za ma ise, ntsi, kate.
Amen.
Amen.